I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, October 10th. And I would like to note for the record that Counselor Crossley, Counselor Iverson, Counselor Deckard, Counselor McKim, and Counselor Hawke, myself, are here in the Nat U Hill Room. Counselor Munson is not here. She is on her way, though, and will be here shortly. So we will go ahead and proceed, and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any items to add or remove from tonight's agenda? I do. I've forgotten. Oh, yes, I was going to do that when we got to it, but of course. We have one item that we're going to table to our next meeting, and that's item number 11 from the Prosecutor's Office. We're still awaiting documentation to officially award the grant, so we'll do that next time. Is...are there any questions or concerns with removing that or tabling that item?
You need to state the date that it's going to be tabled to.
I just said next meeting. Oh, October 24th. So yeah, I guess it's not the next meeting, is it? Holy moly. Can we do a voice, all in favor, of tabling the Prosecutor's Office additional appropriation request to October 24th? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, it passes. Are there any other changes? All right, seeing none, we will proceed with that adopted agenda. Number four on our agenda is public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So if anyone, either online or in person, has any public comment they'd like to make, please make yourself known by raising your hand on Zoom or approaching the podium here in the room. Okay, I see no hands raised, no one coming forth with comments, so we will move on to department updates. Do we have any departments who would like to make an update with for us this evening? I do not see any departments wanting to talk to us this evening, and that is okay. We're, yeah, we're moving through. Now we have council liaison updates. Time for us to think about the various departments and commissions and committees and boards and update each other. Has anything happened that we need to share? Counselor Iverson.
Just briefly, I took advantage of an invitation from our J.FAC days to shadow the court process with Ms. April Wilson and Ms. Karen Rembeck. I spent a little bit of time going to a bunch of different courts and observing and learning, and so just wanted to send out a thanks to the Board of Judges for their hospitality as well as the Office of Prosecutor and Public Defender for making the time to take me around.
Great. Any other updates from councilmen, from council members? Okay. Next, we have on our agenda an abort and commission appointment.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointment of Andrew Gunther to the Environmental Commission, completing a term of two years, which expires on February 1st, 2025.
Second.
Great. This is for the Environmental Commission, and I believe, Peter, you're our liaison to that.
That is correct, Madam President, and should the council approve this, this will bring the body to a full appointment status for the first time in probably before the pandemic. So this is a, this is a big deal that this is on our agenda tonight, and I know that the President of the Environmental Commission has done an interview with Mr. Gunther and sends along his favorable recommendation to the council.
Good to know. Are there any questions or comments from council on this appointment? Counselor Deckard.
I just, I want to thank Mr. Gunther for stepping forward for service. I know he's done that in the past, and I also want to say to anyone watching at home, if you were thinking that you would like to get more involved in serving, boards and commissions are a place to do it, and I feel like we used to say that a lot, and maybe that needs repeated here. How do you know if you're qualified or not? Well, if you're interested and you're willing to serve your community, that'll work. So take a look at the lists that are out there. Let one of us know if you'd be interested. We can try to help you with that, but we need folks in this government of the people to serve in this community with your friends and neighbors. So please step forward as Mr. Gunther is done.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, could I have a roll call vote? Oh, I guess if there's public comment, there would be an opportunity for that as well. If there was any public comment on the appointment? I see none, so let's go ahead with our roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now we move on to item number eight, which is from our Sheriff's Office, and I'd like to acknowledge for the record that council has received a copy of the 2023 January to June commissary fund report. I'd also like to invite Jail Commander Gibbons to give us a brief overview, if you'd like, just of the, the fund report and any other updates regarding the jail. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. A brief overview. As of January 1st, we had came into office with a commissary balance of $36,625.11. Since January 1st, we've had $153,491.54 in receipts, money that we've gained. The interest from January to December is $585.91. Commissary expenditures, $80,087, or $80,087.76. Ending commissary balance as of June 30th is $110,614.80. I don't know how in depth you want to go, but essentially, as of this moment, we've spent that 80K, but we are furnishing every single inmate that comes into the facility, and I've talked about this in prior meetings, so I don't want to go take too much time with everybody here. Shirts, underwears, bras, anything that they need, even if they came in with it, we give them new. Shoes, we paid for different light items that were short for 2023, mats. Some of the people that have come through, you've seen the condition that the mats were in. We ensured that they're not tore up, they're in one piece, they're not flat, where people are laying down on the metal beds. Any, any loss that we've had in terms of the budget we came into, we've compensated with commissary monies, which is specifically what the sheriff is trying to do with those, that money that we bring in.
I have a question, just for everyone's edification. The commissary fund is generated from revenue that the folks who are incarcerated spend in the jail, and what are the types of things that are most, most often purchased and contributing to the fund?
Well, commonly purchased items, we offer a variety of items, whether it's hygiene all the way to soda pop. The most purchased items are tobacco products, number one, first and foremost by far. Soda pop. Very rarely, we get, I mean, we get ramen noodles, things like that, things that are easy to make. We've, we put microwaves, which we purchase out of commissary in every block, so that people could have warm food later on, so that they can purchase certain things that you could cook. My popcorn, for instance, is another item that's pretty highly sought after. But you see a lot of purchases we've approved outside of our jail jumpsuits. You can purchase now and wear inside the block sweatpants, sweatshirt, shorts, so that you can come out of that, just that one issued clothing that we offer initially and save that for when you have AA. You can wear, because you have to wear your jumpsuit when you're moving through the facility.
Oh, okay.
Before, you had to have your jumpsuit on at all times, and when we came in, we thought, I mean, that's hard to wear when you only launder it two times a week. That's because you can't hold up that, that laundry schedule. When you go through the 200 people, you can only get that two times a week. So we try to rectify that with our commissary fund. So basically, what we've, what we've done as a staff is say, if the inmates are going to spend money on products here, and we're going to get a surplus with that, we're going to put it back into the facility itself and the inmates inside of it, as much as we can.
Yeah, thank you. Are there other questions or comments from council? Counselor Iverson.
Yes, thanks for being here. In the list of expenditures by category, the only category where there were zeros was in a line titled TransUnion. Can you explain what that is?
There are some things specifically when it comes to TransUnion, for instance, that I don't take care of, specifically have Jordan Miller take care of those things.
Could you come up to the mic, please?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, I don't have the experience I'd love to have, given my transition in April, but that's something that was used in recent years, and I'm not certain the exact, like the specifics on what that was used for, unfortunately, at this time, but we have not used any thus far this year, and during my time, I can certainly research that to see what was paid from that category and let you know once we have the opportunity to do so.
Sure. Yeah, it, it just jumped out at me since there were zeros on that line, and it's not clear what, you know, it is. So thank you. I appreciate you following up.
I think it's probably money transferring.
Yeah, and there's, there's items in the budget when we went through our, our budget hearings that we've started to slim down for 2024, that we have not, we are not spending money that we don't have to right now for obvious reasons. Everybody's trying to keep things very tight, so.
Sure.
Other questions? Counselor Crossley?
It's not so much a question, it's a comment. I know you had just talked about Commander Gibbons, the, you know, the underwear and bras and things like that, that you have given to, been able to purchase for the female inmates, and I just wanted to say I appreciate that and thank you very much. You all gave me an opportunity to go earlier in the spring to talk to the female inmates, and a lot of them were explaining the reasons why it, it would be helpful to feel some kind of dignity to have those things and why it's important for that, and so I guess I, I was a little taken aback and was surprised that some of those things may have not been kept up with things, but I just wanted to just really say publicly and acknowledge and say thank you for doing that and all that you continue to do to put some type of human dignity to folks that are being held incarcerated. So thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor McKim.
Thank you for the report. I just, I, I see that under expenditures, under equipment, we see night vision goggles, flock cameras, and tasers. I assume those are for the deputy, for the sheriff's side, right, not for the jail?
So by Indiana code, the commissary fund has nine categories that you can purchase from. The night vision goggles were for night shift on the sheriff's side. The flock cameras, we've talked about in other meetings, that's another sheriff's side. We've since rectified that in our new budget. We won't be purchasing that out of commissary next year. The tasers were something that I brought in, which are incredibly expensive, obviously, but they are a less lethal device that we did not have available. For instance, the use of force incident where we had to terminate somebody, I specifically thought as a use of force instructor, if we had a less lethal interjection that we could have utilized rather than engaging in a physical altercation, it would have been much safer. So we invested, we bought six initially. We trained captains, sergeants, corporals, and I still only allow sergeants and captains to carry. In the event that, the, the reason we trained the corporals was if they get promoted, then they have proper training to utilize that. So we went from no tasers to having some tasers, and I didn't want our use of force involving tasers to go up 800% in the first two months, and everybody's like, how did that happen? And I'm like, eh, because we got tasers, that's not what I wanted. So yeah, of those three things, tasers is the only thing, thing that jail purchased.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Well, thank you for being here. I appreciate your time, and just want to echo the comments that appreciate the things that you're doing there in the jail to, to bring a little bit of humanity.
I appreciate that. I think it's, I think, and I don't speak for the sheriff often, but there's a reason he brought me here, and I, I bought into his vision. I think it's very easy to be a good person. And sometimes, without speaking of prior administration, sometimes you get lost in the job and you forget about the people.
Yeah.
And that could have been what happened, but with Sheriff Marte, it's very much people first, without question.
Appreciate that.
So I appreciate you guys seeing that, and we're, we're working hard for it.
Yeah, yeah, we see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving to item nine from our legal department, and go right ahead.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to approve ordinance 2023-34, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for projects which include, but are not limited to, number one, various building and office space improvements, including furniture, carpeting, tile, office space, system renovations, new office systems, restroom improvements, computer improvements, and audio/video equipment improvements. Number two, parking garage improvements, including security and gate systems. Number three, karst trail extensions. Number four, medical equipment for sheriff's vehicles. Number five, airport improvements. And number six, karst-filled turf and all related improvements and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects.
Second.
Thank you. I'd just like to note for the record that Counselor Munson has arrived, and welcome, Mr. Cockrell.
Thank you. At the work session, I presented this along with the appropriation ordinance. Due to the timing of the additional appropriation advertisements, you will actually see the additional appropriation request at your next meeting. But in order to get everything advertised and to get the bond sold before Thanksgiving, which is kind of a magical time, to not do it between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because you get, you get higher interest rates, the risk is higher there. We wanted to go ahead and get this bond in front of you and approve, so we can begin the advertising process for selling the bond. I think the big difference between this one and the, when we talked about last week has already been read, in that we changed items four and five, the metal, medical equipment for sheriff's vehicles and airport improvements, and we, and we took off a couple items that I think we determined that we, we either didn't need or we were going to expend from a different source. So other than that, it's, it's very similar to the bond ordinances that we, we talked about at your last meeting as well as for the last few years at this time of year. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
Counselor Iverson, I mean, McKim.
Thank you. I know we won't have an interest rate until the bonds are actually sold, but what, do you have a, an estimate based on what you're hearing?
It's hard to tell right now. I think for the, for the longer bonds, we were looking at closer to four and a half to 5%. Since this is a one-year bond, I would expect it to be somewhere between the two and a half to three and a half percent, but I can confirm that with the bond, with bond finance, our financial advisor. I didn't reach out to them for that question, but I, that's kind of where my, my mind is.
Thank you.
Other, Counselor Deckard?
I, I just want to say, as I continue to think about this list, this looks like, and I may be misremembering past bonds, but this looks like some of the most impactful bonds, I think, that we've had. And for folks that are watching, for whatever variety of reason of issues they might be interested in, I'm particularly intrigued by the ability to put that medical equipment into sheriff's vehicles. I think that's smart thinking. As Chief Dillard has heard me say a million times, wherever our deputies or our, our fine fire folks are at, they expect the same amenity and protection that they would get anywhere else in the state of Indiana, and I think that that helps to, to do that for our deputies who are out there doing all that. Airport improvements, and of course, the, in the economic development considerations there, Counselor Hawke has talked a great deal about that, and karst-filled turf is huge. As we've talked about, I'd be a very poor Parks liaison to not say that, that that is a thing that is a big deal, and I hear from constituents on that all the time, all the issues we manage, ironically, it's the karst fields that I hear a lot about. Now, look, I know that can be lopsided because people care, but people care, and I think that that is a huge opportunity. So I'm really happy about this list, and I also want to say Ms. Purdy from the Commissioner's Office has been working through the past bonds to maximize those dollars, so those dollars are going into things that are noteworthy, and I think that between that and ARPA and what we're investing in with the county budget, I think it's a really good day for the county.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, as you know, I have many years not voted in favor of the bond issue, and because of the statement that we are making that we don't have the money to do this otherwise. At this point in time, I'm not sure where we stand with the money. I mean, so I want to support the, the raises and some of the other major things that are going on right now, and a lot of this, we can't take care of with ARPA money or some of those big pots of money that people may say, well, look at all the money you have, but we're required to use that for certain things. So it's going to shock you all, I know, but I'm going to support the bond this time. That doesn't mean I will next time, but it is because I don't have a real good feeling for where we are on the money. I know we got a report, and I looked at three port, and I thought, okay, where are the four Bs and tell me when we're going to run out of the money that we're spending, more than we're bringing in, and so I don't have a good feeling about that. But I do have a good feeling about making sure we do something about those soccer fields that so many people want and what we have to do at the airport. That has to happen. That just, no two ways about it, has to happen. So I'm going to support it this year. I didn't want you to be too shocked, but.
Just as, as a father of someone who plays soccer out at Karst, I, I hear a lot about the soccer field as well.
I'm speechless. Go right ahead.
I'm kind of speechless, too.
I never do this, folks. I never do this.
You never do. It's amazing.
Just, I'll be real brief. I support all the projects on this list. I think it's a well-selected group of projects with broad benefits across the county and stuff that I think the, the public is going to be supportive, and it has been, has shown their support of.
I wanted to ask just one question, and this might be better asked when we have the, the appropriation part in front of us, but the karst turf, is that, that's budgeted at, at partial, not the entire?
Correct.
Part out of this. Okay.
I'm looking back, I believe it's 1.2 million of it is out of this.
Okay.
So it's, it's not the full amount.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was remembering correctly. So we still have some more work to do there?
Correct.
Got it. Got it. Did you have more to add?
If I may, I was just going to say that the Karst project, if you will, there is a 1.2 million for the actual regular fields. Project that they would have for drainage and things of that nature, and then there's the four-point, something I don't remember, that does, two field, we had this conversation, I think we thought.
Yeah, it was two, two turf fields and lights.
Two turf fields and lights. That's the 4 million. So you could, this 1.2 could be used for the, toward the one, to the, for the four-point, whatever. Or you can, at a later date, choose to do all of the fields and the regular grass fields.
I see.
So you have some options there.
Okay.
Does that make sense? We could do it all, make it all nice and.
We could do it all, just like that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, are there questions? Anything else from council on this one? All right. Then could we hear public comment, if there is any? I see no public comments, so could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are on to item 10 on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 1215-006A, Election Fund Commissioners, in the amount of $1,000 in the Supplies category and $71,000 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $72,000.
Second.
Thank you, and hello again, Ms. Purdy.
Hello again. Sorry, I was not paying attention.
And I believe, I believe we heard about the nature of this during budget, because this is something that needs to be in there.
Yeah, yes, we did. We did talk about this during the budget. By taking on the, what used to be NAPA, we have obligations for that particular building. It's specific to elections, and so what we've been doing, because we failed to request a budget for this year, in 2023, we've been making payments out of our county general, and so this will help us to make corrections as we need and hopefully to move forward, ensuring that the election costs are all in one particular budget.
Great. Are there questions? Counselor McKim?
So the, the, just to clarify, the rent gets paid to the building corporation, the Conventions Center Building Corporation?
Correct. Yeah.
Counselor Crossley and then Counselor Iverson.
Hi, Ms. Purdy. I had just a really general quick question. Is there, because I've had people ask about this, and I'm curious about it, too. Is there any type of signage that will be on the building that will let people know that this, that NAPA is the election, like where people can go to vote? I know that the signs on the sidewalk are there, but you really can't see it unless you pass by, but I'm just curious to know if there is any type of, something in the works where on the awning or some sort, there is something that lets people know, that let people know that that is a place where they can go vote.
I think that's a really good question. We, we don't have any current plans for something of that nature. I do think that part of, part of our concerns or issues were, first of all, we didn't know, the clerk didn't want to particularly use that building, and so it was originally supposed to be just for the one, I think, last year. And then we've got the CIB, and that is part of that project. So, but you have a really good point, and so we need to at least think of signage for our upcoming election and going forward. Maybe something that's temporary or?
Yeah.
I'm open to any ideas you guys might have.
Yeah, I think that's just really important, just because for, like, especially for the upcoming, the big election year that will be happening next year.
Oh, yeah.
Just for people to know, and, and I'm, I know the lovely history that goes along with that building and some of the things that go along with it, but yeah, I'm just, I would be curious. I would be curious to see if there is something that we could do that's temporary that I would hope that doesn't cost a lot, or we can just have something that would be out. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll look into that. That's a good idea.
I have nothing further. I'm glad this is forced.
One thing I want to say about that location that I like about it is it is a place with more than adequate parking for anyone who is coming to vote. And really, if you look at progressive voter administration, which is really just letting everybody vote, they say, make sure you have adequate parking, put it on a bus line. You couldn't be closer to a bus line. And in a really identifiable spot. Now, crossing that intersection is my favorite thing to do on a Saturday or any day. But that's, I mean, that's anywhere you go. And I, I think there's something to be said for that. I do love the notion of getting a sign on that, because for us who run for office, we understand what that building is. You could hide that thing in Michigan, we'll find it. For the average bear out there, it doesn't work that way. And every once in a while, we got to go to those outside eyes. Somebody passing by that every day who says, I don't know what they all go there for, but look at those signs. So that, I think that could be a helpful thing. But it's a, as it comes to accessibility, it theoretically meets a lot of those checkmarks if you're making ballot access a readily available thing.
Really good points. Great suggestion. Other questions or comments on the current motion? Is there any public comments? I do not see any. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to number 12 on the agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Court's request for additional appropriations in Fund 4018-0000 Court Interpreter Grant in the amount of $2,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Right. Do we have anybody here?
No.
Okay.
Lisa Abraham was unable to attend, and so she asked me to read something for you.
Sure.
And I'm trying to find it. Sorry, there it is. She's, okay, so this is what she sent me. She said, "In January, the Courts received a $10,000 Court Interpreter Grant, which the Council appropriated. All of the grant money has been spent, so the Court applied for an emergency interpreter grant. On September 7, the Court was advised that they would receive an additional $2,000. This grant is reimbursable, and that will help offset the costs incurred with interpreter services for the Court hearings. The Court is asking for the Council to appropriate this amount at this time."
All right, very straightforward. Are there questions or comments on this one? Any public comments? Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We now have a series of items from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 8150-9623 Tana Futures in the amount of $4,818.20 in the Personnel category and $2,276.04 in the Supplies category for a total appropriation of $7,094.24.
Second.
Hi, Ms. Kelly. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. This is just a request to appropriate our reimbursements and income from the long-acting reversible contraceptives. So this is just going to continue to help us to support salary expenses and supplies for the Futures Clinic.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Any public comments? Let's go ahead with a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 8138-9621 in the amount of $2,746.59 in the Services category.
Second.
Okay.
Yes. And so recently, when our financial manager was reconciling Fund 8138, it was discovered that the Health Department received a reimbursement for a grant claim. This was in 2021, yet that was never issued a payment to IU Health. So this was just basically a correction that has been made.
Okay. Questions on this one? Any questions down here? Public comment on this item?
Public. Oh, oh.
I just wanted to thank the Health Department for their diligence in putting their various accounts in order. And I believe it's appreciated by everybody on the council. Thank you.
Indeed. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
C. Thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8104-9624 Public Health Emergency Preparedness of $2,109 from the Services category to the Supplies category.
Second.
Okay.
And this is just a transfer request to allow our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator and Assistant to be able to purchase remarkable devices, which are like electronic writing tablets.
All right. Any questions, Counselor Iverson?
I just want to thank Ms. Kelly for her extensive documentation for this category transfer. That's, thank you for putting all that in there.
You are welcome.
Anything else from council?
Those devices are cool.
They are cool.
I'm getting one myself.
I want to see them.
I thought the title was wonderful. They're remarkable. I'm thinking, okay, somebody knew what they were doing.
Yep. Good marketing on that one. Any public comment on this? And it looks like we can do a voice vote since it's a category transfer. So all in favor of the category transfer as described in the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we're at 14. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And we're at 14 from our Probation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 9138-0000 Veterans' Court Grant in the amount of $78,220 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Good evening, Counsel. Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. This is one of eight agenda items I have for you tonight. The first one is our grant for our Veterans' Court program. We get this from the Indiana Office of Court Services. We've received this grant for the past, well, at least over five years. And it goes towards paying for our probation officer case management, case manager who is in Veterans' Court supervising those individuals. And it's part of one of our four problem-solving courts.
Great. Are there questions or comments from council? Nope. All right. Is there any public comment on this one? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 1123-9624 Community Transition Program in the amount of $15,000 in the Supplies category, $30,000 in the Services category, and $5,000 in the Capital category for a total appropriation of $50,000.
Second.
So the Community Transition Program has been around for a while. It's been, you know, authorized by Indiana State statute for quite some time. And basically what it is, is somebody who has been sentenced to the Department of Correction, when they are being released, or a little bit before their release date, they notify the courts to let us know that somebody is going to be released soon, and then ask the court whether they had authorized community transition, which is basically a program there where we might bring them back a little bit early into the community, because they're going to be living in our community. And we want to provide some intensive services to try to get them in appropriate housing, inappropriate services, back into the community so that we hopefully have a successful reentry. The Department of Correction reimburses us $25 a day per individual who is in the program that we accept. I did look up a little bit of stats for this. And in the past 12 months, we've only had six people in the program. So it's not used very often. But of those six, every one of those were sentenced out of Monroe County, and they were living in our county prior to being sentenced to the Department of Correction. And they were coming back after. So we wanted to try to make that as successful a transition as possible. So these funds go to help with that and to help offset some of the expenses that go into that program, as well as other expenses for the department.
All right. Are there questions or comments from council? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. First of all, thank you for taking time to talk with me about this grant and to help me understand that this is for Monroe County residents. It's not for people coming in from other counties that we're providing this service for. And the reason why I have concerns about that, as I shared with you, is that we have enough problems of our own without welcoming people that will need services from the folks here in Monroe County. So I'm happy to hear that we're doing what we can for those that are going to be coming back to our community, but that we are not doing it in such a fashion that we are putting our own folks at risk. So thank you.
Counselor McKim?
What are the criteria used to determine who's allowed to participate in this kind of program?
Sure. So it's really up to the courts. The letter is sent to the local court that sentenced the individual. We do a little bit of a background information about what they were doing in the Department of Correction, where they might be residing in the community, and some of the services that the individual would like to receive, how willing they are to receive those services, before the courts make a decision about authorizing the program. The vast majority of them that are on CTP come back in through the reentry court system or their problem-solving court. So they get really intensive services. They meet with people several times a week. They meet with the court each week as they come back. So, but it's really up to each individual judge who sentences the individual, whether they would accept them back.
So this is really an alternative to the reentry court? Or is it working conjunction?
It works in conjunction. Now, we could have somebody who's in CTP that is not accepted in reentry, or they don't volunteer to be part of the reentry court. So, but it does most of the time work in conjunction with reentry court.
Thank you.
Yep.
And? I have two questions. One, my first question is that of duration. How long are individuals in the CTP? Or is it dependent on the judge's ruling?
CTP is six months or less typically. So it's a very short period of time. And it's typically at the end, you know, it would be at the end of somebody's commitment to the DOC. Yeah, just about six months or less.
And my second question was on the drug testing, electronic monitoring. Is for all, for those in CTP, is that universal, that all the individuals that are in the program are monitored? Or is that based on, again, the judge's ruling?
It's based on each individual circumstance. Yeah. And what's, the judge wishes as they're coming back in, especially if they're in reentry court, whether they, you know, they volunteer to be in reentry court, some of those restrictions that might apply. But it's really individually based on what the person's needs are.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes. When we are reviewing the population in the jail, and we see those that say, holding for Department of Correction, some of which we've held for quite some time. And the last I spoke with the Sheriff's Department, said that they had been able to move about 20 of those on to Department of Corrections. But is this in part because of our reentry court and this particular service that we're providing?
So the ones that may be held in jail as far as for a DOC commitment, really, I'm not, I'm not sure. Once they are committed to the DOC, they're kind of, they're awarded custody to the sheriff, and then whatever the sheriff works out with the Department of Corrections in terms of dates to try to get them moved up to reception and diagnostic. Others might be parole holds that are in there. And if that's the case, you know, that's a DOC commitment. They're, they're being held there for that. So really, once that commitment happens, it's really up to the sheriff to figure out when they move to the Department of Correction, when the DOC can accept them.
When we hear many times that we have overcrowding in the jail, and of course, I know there's been a lot of work to reduce those numbers. But when you see several of them that were holding for the state, and I understand that was a problem throughout the state, because some kind of mix-up with their computer systems or some such. But I think we yet reimburse something like 35 bucks a day or something like that for that. But that does not begin to cover the cost of operating a jail. So I want to make sure that we're not purposely doing things that end up costing the people of this county a great deal of money. And that might not be your question, so.
Yeah, that's probably not a good question for me to answer. It'd be a better question for the sheriff to answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there questions or comments on this? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Now, C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 4924-9624 Probation Cares Grant in the amount of $1,350 in the Supplies category and $2,080 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $3,430.
Second.
Yeah, so this is a Cares Grant, a local community grant. It's in two parts. Part of it, it goes to help support our drug treatment court, helps offset the cost for drug testing for the participants there. And another part is awarded to our Community Corrections Program to help purchase some journals and things like that, that we use as interventions with our clients, to really work through things like, you know, problem solving and peer relationships, family relationships, things like that.
Are there questions from council? All right. Public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. And now we're on D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 9140-0000 Pre-Trial Program Grant IOCS in the amount of $207,345 in the Personnel category. I hope I got that acronym right.
Yeah, so this is a second Indiana Office of Court Services grant, and this helps fund our and this helps fund our pretrial services program in the county. And if you recall during the budget hearings, we let you know that we had just found out that this grant more than doubled, which was fantastic news because it's paying a large portion of the salaries for the trial attorney, the public defender, as well as a probation officer. And we were just very pleased to be able to receive this grant and then actually provide more funding for the next year.
That is great. Counselor Hawke.
Yes. Can you tell us if this grant that you've been awarded is going to require Monroe County to do more than we have in the past, or is this the same?
Same as we've doing. And in our pretrial program, like, for example, our, our officers assess over 2,000 people a year who are newly arrested and try to provide some information to the court prior to initial hearings to see who might be most appropriately served in the community while they're pre, while they are pretrial, during their pretrial period, or what kind of services they might need, those types of things, so that we can try to make that transition as successful as possible to hopefully have everybody appear back in court during that pretrial phase, as well as not get rearrested during that time.
So, when we see that they're wanted on a warrant, or, you know, they're not showing up as they have promised to do when they are released, then is there consideration of perhaps not releasing so many so quickly? Or is that's just up to the courts and not something the probation officers weigh in on?
Well, so, I mean, the courts are the ultimate decision-maker on all of those issues, and those decisions are based on each individual person and the circumstances before them.
Are there other questions or comments? Is there public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now, we're on to E, right?
Yes.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 91500000 Mental Health Court Grant in the amount of $49,376 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Okay, so, the next four are grants that all come from the Department of Correction. We receive over a million and a half dollars per year to help fund our Community Corrections programming. So, that includes not just our Community Corrections, but this funding also helps us with our Mental Health Court, also provides some funding to our Drug Court, as well as pretrial services. So, this is a grant that we've been awarded for years, many years. However, it is flatlined and has been for the past several years. We're kind of stuck at that 1.5 million. And so, unfortunately, that kind of means we have to offset any additional expenses in our project income fund. We're doing okay with that at the moment, but who knows what might happen in the future? We are very hopeful, well, we don't foresee any increases next year in 2025 either because it runs on a state budget year. This is the first grant they dole out for this state budget year that we're in. We expect probably to be flatlined again next year, but we will certainly advocate for additional funding in future years with the state. But this is kind of where it's at. So, this first one is for a Mental Health Court.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. Ratfield? Go ahead and add.
I don't know if this is in your bailiwick, but do you have data for the Mental Health Court program?
Yeah, we do track a lot of issues. I don't know that I can answer much off the top of my head at the moment, depending on what your question is.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I wanted to couch it a little bit to say, I don't know, you're prepared to speak about all the, this and the next three, so. We'll leave it be. Yeah.
Okay.
Are there other questions or comments, Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Does this particular grant that you're receiving, does it require a certain number of probation officers?
So, the, it doesn't necessarily require a certain number of personnel, personnel in its entirety. But, you know, we go through in terms of creating this grant or writing this grant every year to look at our needs within the department, to make sure that we can appropriately service those in our community who are being sent to us. And then, our Community Corrections Advisory Board and our Board of Judges makes a decision about what to ask for each year. We have kind of, we try to ask for additional personnel whenever we can. But again, we've been flatlined for the past few years, so we haven't been able to increase, to be able to hopefully get our numbers down so that our, our client-to-office ratio is smaller because we know those smaller numbers will help create better success and more opportunities for success for our clients.
The reason I ask the question is since we don't know, maybe everyone else has got this figured out, but we don't know when we're going to get to the point where, where we're going to have to not have the dollars to make up for the raises and so forth for those who are covered with grants. And I know when the state came out and said, "We're going to force you counties to pay probation officers a certain dollar amount." And, and, you know, of course, if you're a probation officer, you love that. That was many years ago when they said that. And the county councils, we were in session at the time at the state, and we were very concerned because not all counties are as well-off as we are, and you know that. And so, what we were told was, if you're up against it, just don't hire as many probation officers so that you can cover their salaries. And for a lot of different counties, they're going to have to do that because they've not had the increase in revenue that we have. So, I hope that we'll continue to do real well here in Monroe County. But if that time ever comes, I would like for you to keep an eye on that extra, the dollars that you're coming in for those user fees and see if there's a time that you can kind of slow down the use of that because I know there's a lot of people here who would rather we don't really charge user fees. So, we're going to have to make some tough choices in the future.
I will say, I keep a real close eye on all of those funds and projected out several years. And so far, so good, fingers crossed that we don't run into any big bumps in the road. But hopefully, we'll be able to weather the storm of not having any increases the next year or two. And then, we'll see what happens with the state budget in the coming years.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson.
Just one more question. The 1.5 million dollars that Monroe County receives, how's that compare with other communities across Indiana?
That's a great question. I would say that we are fortunate, and I believe that the Department of Correction really likes Monroe County and the things that we do here. You know, we offer a lot of programs and services, and I, I believe that we are a leader in the state in many of the things that we do, and I think that's reflective in the money that we receive. So, I do think we are fortunate, more fortunate than other counties in that respect.
That's helpful context, particularly for a body that looks at dollar figures all night long. It's good to know. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 91420000 Community Corrections Grant in the amount of $1,049,167 in the Personnel category.
Again, this is the Community Corrections portion of the Department of Correction grant.
Wow. Any questions or comments, Counselor Iverson?
I suppose this is a good point as any to just publicly state. I was in the courts for one day only, and, and the work that your department does, liaising with the different courts, both in the court system and then back out on the street, is remarkable. And, and just that so much of the public has no idea what you all do every single day. And it was, it was remarkable. It was like watching a miracle worker piece together different pieces of the community to help individuals as they're navigating these court systems. And so, I just wanted just big kudos to everything you and your team are doing because it's absolutely necessary.
I appreciate it. I know our staff work really hard to create success in our community. And I'd like to invite anybody who would like to come over and take a tour of our offices and kind of sit down and see what we do. Please reach out. I know Chief Linda Brady would love to have and host any one of you.
Appreciate that. Any other, go ahead and add.
Yes, for those listening at home, because I have several people interested in, you know, what's going on, the probation office, and, and how that might tie to the kind of situations that we're seeing many times with the criminal transients that we see and, and one might call all the folks who are dropping the dirty needles everywhere and causing this community a lot of havoc. And I, I just wonder just how bad it would be if we didn't have the probation officers, if we didn't have the assistance that we have. Maybe we wouldn't have as many people pouring into Monroe County. On the other hand, I would not want to be the one who didn't want to provide safety as far as we can take it for our community because if there's one thing that I hear over and over again outside of worrying about the price of groceries and gas, is that they are tired of not feeling safe on the streets. They're tired of not knowing that they can go to the grocery store without somebody knocking them down to get their money or even go to McDonald's and have somebody take the food right off of your plate. So, I know that you folks are not the one out arresting these people doing these crimes, but you have to be the ones working with them. And so, it takes the whole team to try to get, make this community safer. And I hope that what we do, what you do, what others do, will be able to bring back some of that feeling that Monroe County residents had for years, that we felt safe on the streets and we felt safe in our homes. And if you think this sounds like an unusual statement coming from me, I invite you to listen in on my telephone and hear all of the comments I'm getting. They don't come here and tell us, but they sure tell me. And it's just your average Joe on the street. So, and, and I appreciate what you do because, as I said, I think it takes a team, and, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson and then Counselor Deckard.
I'm really looking forward to some of the conversations we're going to have later on in our, on our calendar here this evening because I think what it does is it highlights where we are as a community is we don't look at individuals suffering from mental health or from substance abuse disorder from a fear-based or crime-based lens. In fact, we look to individuals so that we can help them. We see them as our neighbors, and we're looking to make sure that there are services for people who truly do need the helping hand of not only county government, but also the different nonprofits that, that work with them. It is really important to state that individuals who are out there, who are begging for help, are not necessarily criminal. They are not necessarily dangerous, and we are doing everything we can to get the services out to those individuals. Thank you.
Yeah, I did. I want to add it, add to this. One thing that has struck me is I've kind of watched probation over the years and as we're doing these funds, and I always appreciate when we go through these line by line. And honestly, we could take more time with it. I think we probably should because we up here as elected officials talk a lot about treatment options. Meanwhile, the probation department's not only doing treatment in targeted demographic areas. I mean, folks on that, a few lines back, we approved dollars towards a Veterans Court. Let me say that one more time. A Veterans Court, a target population which is lauded by all of us until we get them in the boots, and then somehow, when they get home, we forget about them. And when they're out in our parks, we forget about them. But we have a court that is helping, is target-minded towards a demographic area. And so, as we talk about treatment, I hope in our justice discussion that we go to probation because they have the data. We've seen it. That's why they're getting the grants. Mr. Hatfield keeps that data. Ms. Brady has supported that and been a leader at this state. And as we get that information, I think that can guide us. Rather than, say, the generic term treatment, we can go to our folks in probation who actually know our neighbors and friends in our community. And the other thing I'll say is, I am anxious, and I'm waiting for the other counties to step up. I want to know what they're going to do. I want to know what we would have done had they, how were people going to pay probation officers until the state got involved? Or are they just going to act like it's not happening? And so, I, you can hide your problem and you can run from your problem, but your problem's going to go somewhere. And we're already in, we've got politicians passing the buck at the federal, state, and local level, to be truthful. It is time for leaders of communities to have vision for what that's going to look like. And that might mean you need a Veterans Court, right? And that might mean that you need problem-solving courts, period, because these problems will not go away. So, my, my long diatribe is to say, poor Mr. Hatfield's going to be in a lot more long meetings with Ms. Brady talking about data and treatment solutions so that folks like me get it right when we do what we do because that is part of it. These problems, they will exist. They'll continue to exist. They're in every family to some form in this community, and we've got to be real about that. It's not going away. The substance may change, but it's not going away. So, I appreciate you coming here and your patience with all of our questions. We're going to need you a whole lot more than what we've got you right now, and I apologize for that.
Well said. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hatfield? All right. Any public comment? And I see none, so let's have a roll call vote on this appropriation.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 91480000 Drug Court Grant in the amount of $157,711 in the Personnel category.
Second.
So, this is another DOC grant. This helps fund our Drug Treatment Court that has been in existence in our county since 1999, so 2024 will be our 25th year in operation.
Wow. Kudos.
Do you happen to know how many we have in the remainder of the state, drug, drug courts?
How many drug courts? I know there are over 100 problem-solving courts. I'm not sure how many drug courts specifically. We just, I think, they announced at the state level, they hit over 100 as of this year. But I believe Monroe County is one of the first problem-solving courts. I don't know if it was the first. Chief Brady would know better than I. But we were very early on adopting a drug court.
Thank you.
Other questions, Counselor Hawke?
As a note of positive reinforcement here, because I was around when that happened, and you might remember, well, I'm not sure you were here yet.
I came in 2004, so it's before me.
One of the, no, you weren't. One of the things that I'm most proud of is that in meeting with some people from Ball State, when I went to a conference, I arranged for the person who was giving the lecture to come here to Monroe County to give the training, and we arranged to have it at the Convention Center. And there were hundreds of people, hundreds of people, who showed up so they could learn how to write grants, and, and it was free to the public. it was free to the public. But the entire meeting room was full, the upstairs at the Convention Center. And at that time, one of the ladies from the court, my, I don't know, I don't think it was probation folks, but it might have been, because everybody was there, wrote a grant and helped support one of these very first problem-solving courts. That was back in the day. So for those of you who might think I only say negative things, there are times that you have to weigh in and say, here's the truth of what I'm hearing from the public. And I also go one step further and say, we could not have done what we have done in this county without the grants. And I know that and you know that. And Linda Brady knows that. So we're fortunate to have the grants and we just have to know what the grants require us to do. So thank you.
Anything further? All right. Any public comment? Let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Muntzen?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 9144-0000, pretrial services grant in the amount of $271,866 in the personnel category. Second.
I appreciate you for allowing me to grab your attention for so long. This is our last one. This is the final one from the Department of Correction Grant, and it helps support our pretrial services program.
Any other comments on this one? Counselor Muntzen?
Since this is the last, last effort for the probation department tonight, I just wanted the public to know that out of these eight grants, the probation department has brought in over $1,867,000 to serve the people in their needs in Monroe County. And kudos to Mr. Hatfield, Beck Stride and Chief, Chief Probation Officer Linda Brady. You have our, you have our gratitude and I thank the gratitude of all the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any other comments?
I can say that better. I don't.
Yeah. I was actually going to say something not nearly as eloquent, but thank you for being here. We really enjoy when you visit because we learn a lot about the programs. And it may seem that you did bring us all these last year and we did appropriate them then too, but you know, a lot of things come before us and I, I have learned a little bit more each year about your program and what you do. And I think my colleagues said it well, it's, it's such important, good work that shepherds folks, you know, through a complicated time and a complicated system. And it's, it's really heartening when we get to see you here telling us about, you know, all of the, the different things that you work on to make people's lives better. So that's it. Sorry, I said I wasn't going to and then I did. Counselor Iverson?
I, I did, one thing was brought to my attention is that if the public goes to the probation department's homepage, Mr. Troy Hatfield's picture is there, holding his national award. And I think we should probably take every advantage we can to congratulate you on being nationally recognized for your good work.
Congratulations. Any public comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that it is really a pleasure to work with the probation department. Their grants are so clean. I know Bree probably wants to say something. It's just absolutely amazing the work they do.
I completely agree. Thank you.
Does, yeah, makes the auditor's office happy. That's always good. We'll go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Muntzen?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hatfield. We are at item 15 on our agenda, which is a discussion on our opioid settlement funds. And I invited Commissioner Githens to come and help us talk through just what these monies are, how we can spend them, what ideas. I've heard a lot of different things proposed and the commissioners have looked at using these funds in certain ways. And I wanted to just have a public discussion about the nature of these monies and what we are planning for them, if anything.
Well, may I share my screen?
Yes, of course.
Okay. I haven't done this before with you all, so please forgive me. So I got to get back up here, get it started. So I wanted to talk today about, why isn't it not starting? I may need to have somebody better equipped than I am to get this going.
You want to just click on slideshow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Slideshow in the menu from beginning.
It's up at the top.
Yeah, and it's covered up by the other things that are on here.
Oh, no.
That's frustrating.
Can you tell this room is full of professors?
I do this in class every day like 500 times.
Okay, let me see if I can take that off. Okay, sorry.
You almost got it.
Yeah. It's this part that is in the way. I've got stuff on my screen that's in the way is the problem. Okay, well, let me just, maybe I can run it from here. Okay. Here we go. So I wanted to talk with you about the opioid grant that we have received from the state. This is in addition to the opioid settlement money that Bree is going to talk about in a little while. But we would like very much to use some of that opioid settlement money as a match for this grant. So part of what we'll be talking about is the local syringe services program. And you all know intimately, I think, about what this is, what it provides. Sterile needles, syringes, safe disposal. It helps prevent HIV and hepatitis C transmission and a lot of other things. So this is one of the things that, that we are looking at with this additional grant money. And then what, what it can do for us reduces those overdose deaths. It reduces new HIV and viral hep infections. It allows us to reach out to people in a trusted manner when they're ready to start their road to recovery. It reduces injuries from needle sticks and they, it tends to, their data indicates that it does not increase crime where they are located. So one of the big things that we put in for, as a request this time, was to replace Larry, the Indiana Recovery Alliance's outreach van. Larry is 28 years old, older than half the population of the earth at this point, probably. Larry has, is on his second motor. It breaks down frequently, has to be taken to Indianapolis where it sometimes sits for a week or more for repair, which means that it's not able to do what we want it to do. And right now, the Indiana Recovery Alliance is working out of what I think of as a storefront almost at this location at 169 South Rogers Street. It's very small, it's costly, and it doesn't meet the needs of the Indiana Recovery Alliance. So earlier this year, we had the chance to apply for additional grant money. The folks at the Indiana Recovery Alliance, our own health department and I worked together, we, we had less than a month to put this application together to work on some things that we thought would make a big improvement in our community. So if I may, I'd like to, oops, why is this video not starting? Okay, I, I don't know if I need to turn up my sound, but we'll see how this goes. How are we going to do this? Sorry. TSD, can you help me? Well, if not, this is a, a video that was made by WFY and showed in 2019. And it basically talks about what goes on here, what the role of the Indiana Recovery Alliance is in our community. And if I could go back to the slideshow, I'll just move on and skip the video. So.
He's, he's working on it.
So what, what we are looking for is we would like to purchase for the Indiana Recovery Alliance, one used van that we've been able to find for $180,000. Now, when we originally submitted the grant, there was another grant available that indicated that through the state, that they would provide $130,000 for the kind of recovery van that the Indiana Recovery Alliance has. So we asked the state for $100,000 and that we would match it with $30,000. For some reason, the state caught what they thought we were going to match it with for a total of $120,000. We can't find anything that will suit for $120,000, not even something that's grossly used. The best thing that we can find is a used van that is $180,000. This particular van is only two years old. It has less than 4,500 miles on it. And we think it's something that could last for many years. Also, because of the condition it's in, it could be going out to other places that, that Larry just can't get to because Larry's just falling apart. And this, one of the things that, that I wish we'd been able to show the video, sorry, but meeting people where they are is critical. There are people, first of all, that don't have transportation to come to the Indiana Recovery Alliance or other places. So the more that we can reach out to people, the better our outcomes are going to be. And these are evidence-based practices. So if we can put up $80,000, we will get $100,000 from the state. The other is a new home for the Indiana Recovery Alliance. We have identified a property, property on the west side of town. It seems to be zoned correctly. We've gone through phase one environmental study of it already, ready to move on to phase two. And we had estimated a new home would cost over half a million dollars. I know that seems like a lot, but the state was willing to give us $350,000 of that. And that would mean that we would need to put up $200,000 from our opioid settlement money. And we have that, we have that money. Doing something like that will allow the money that IRA raises, instead of going for rent, they can use that then for staff and for other outreach programs that they're doing. So over the course of the, the two-year grant also, the Monroe County Health Department will receive up to $102,000 as part of this grant. We, they've asked us to put up $15,000 from our opioid settlement money to do that, which again, is a tremendous amount back for what we would put, put in. And then for each month that we report anything, we get, we get paid by the state for reporting what we're doing. We'll get $1,000 a month. So we could receive up to $576,000 from the state if we would spend a bit of our own money. So what does it mean? We would have a reliable outreach van, meeting people where they are. They have a van also. This van would provide other services other than what they can provide right now in terms of some of the, the testing that they could do and things like that. And the, the place that has the van right now is willing to customize it to make sure that it's, it's what we need. I should tell you too, that Larry originally was an ice cream truck. It was not purpose-built to serve as an outreach van like this. IRA will have a much larger space and they'll be able to do other things. They would like to do group meetings, for example, and start to look at a recovery-oriented community. And then, of course, the harm reduction that we provide should make a difference in reducing Hep C and any HIV outbreaks. And this also puts more people on the road to recovery. And that's one of the things that we've been talking about, all the things related to our jail and what we're looking at. We're looking at treatment options. This is one of the ways that you get people into treatment. Harm reduction is five times more effective at getting people into treatment than almost anything else. So this is, I think, important to the community. So like I said, through various efforts, the state is willing to provide up to $576,000. We would have to provide a match of $275,000. And the sooner those funds are allocated, the sooner we can move on the things that we'd like to do. I'm convinced, and Bree can talk to this later, or Auntie Purdy, I think, is online. She can jump in and talk about this. But this is not, this isn't even account for the money that we received in the first year of our opioid settlement money. We also know that this matches the kinds of things that you're allowed to do with this money. And and these are lives. These are lives that we can save with all this. And so I don't know what other questions you might have, but I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. I'm sure we do. And it looks like Counselor McKim will get us started.
Thank you very much. I, in adding up the numbers that you had showed that we'd have to spend from local monies, it was, it came up to about a little bit more, like $295.
It might be. I was having, Ms. Purdy informed me that I had some stuff wrong. I was sitting in the back trying to upgrade stuff. So if, if I'm a little off, I do apologize. We'll get those straightened out for you. But again, even that is less than the first year of the settlement money. And, and we have not received the settlement from all the groups that we, that the state anticipates getting the settlement from. We may end up with double what we, what we initially receive, would be receiving. And in the end, that's what, over, how many million, Bree? Do you have that at your fingertips?
I do have it. So again, the grand totals I have right now are estimated because there are settlements that aren't finalized. So the unrestricted funding is estimated to be $1,349,942. And then the abatement restricted funding is $3,597,505.82. We will get an additional amount that's also restricted. It's really Steinsville's abatement portion that we add to our restricted funding. It's just another 4,700, but.
And sorry, my, my point was not to nitpick your.
No, no.
Sorry, it was actually to ask about, just to confirm that the idea is that all of this match could be paid out of the restricted portion?
Yes. It all, it, I went through the, all the definitions of what qualifies. And so much of this is harm reduction. It's outreach. It's gets people into treatment. It matches all those.
And so have we actually received all of the 2022 and 2023 amounts? I know we're sort of blending the two topics.
That's okay. I'm happy to jump in. Okay. So I was able to contact somewhat the attorney working on this at the Attorney General's Office. And she was lovely. I provided her contact information. So if we have further questions, it's easy. But we are still waiting on the additional settlement monies from those settlements pending. And they still expect to get those in 2023 and distribute. So that's why our 2023 settlement monies we received have been off much less than expected. So I was able to confirm that. Now, they, it could still fluctuate. I mean, it's, we don't anticipate anything going down. However, we do anticipate more coming. So.
But we do, it looks like, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm also looking at the numbers that you provided in our, in our packet. in our packet. We do expect approximately $900,000 in restricted money essentially by the end of this year, or is that approximately correct?
Um, well, total, yes. If you're looking at '22 and '23, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we haven't spent anything yet.
No, nothing has been spent, just some kind of obligated at this point.
Right. But, but I guess what I'm, what I'm getting is it sounds like, if this is, let's say it's even as high as 300,000, it's less than half of what we should have in the abated portion by the end of this year.
Sure. I mean, I was told it's expected now until we receive it, yes. But yes, we still have, I mean, the cash balances still cover what we need, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Iverson?
Thank you, Commissioner Githens, for your presentation. And just so that we know, I think the Monroe County Commissioners have made sure that an SSP exists here in Monroe County, and we're one of eight, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're only one of eight communities in the whole state that are engaged in this type of life-saving work.
We're one of eight counties, and we have to every two years reauthorize that to make it happen. And there have been counties that had it in place, and then they pulled back.
That's right.
Including the county immediately to our south.
So, first of all, for those in the recovery community and for the rest of us, thank you for doing that. It's really important. Secondly, based on the slides that you showed us, I'm particularly interested in the building for IRA. Could you talk a little bit more about how that building could fit into plans for an IRACs or an RCO here in Monroe County?
Well, this is, the building is out on the west side of town on a bus line, first of all, which is important, again, for transportation reasons. From what I can tell, it's not that far from where the new Beacon facility is proposed. It's got its own parking, they would have control over things, and I think it just, it fits in so many ways, because I think there are people that at times, when they're ready to go into recovery, we know there's still a lot of stigma. We know that. And so, sometimes there are people who are embarrassed to be seen going in. And so, the more that we can make them feel safe, make them feel good about what they're doing, I think the better our community will be. And we, for me, you know, I was looking at the claims for tomorrow, that every week the Commissioners have to do this. Part of those claims are for things like CASA, for our guardian ad litem, for all these other things. If we can help people into recovery, we're saving not only that individual, we're saving families. And to me, that's another piece of this.
Just a quick follow-up. So, is this building large enough that it could accommodate IRA and other organizations? Or would this building be solely for the use of the IRA, Indiana Recovery Alliance?
At this point, the plan is it would just be for the Indiana Recovery Alliance, but it would have meeting rooms, it would have rooms so that if you wanted to be tested for different things, if you've got, I'm not sure what all they're going to do, I don't want to overstate, because I might say the wrong thing here, but in the video, and I'm, I'll send you guys a link to it, you see the inside of their current building, and it's stacked with boxes. They don't have as much room as we have here in this front row of seats to meet with people. And I think that's a hindrance. And if they get huge supplies in, like we like to do when we buy in bulk, right, they're really in trouble.
Counselor McKinnon?
So would the IRA be the owner of record of the building?
Yes, yes. And Jeff Cockrell and our legal department has been working with their attorney. We probably will have some kind of maybe five-year covenant on it, but beyond that, it would go to them. And again, the, with our syringe services program, that's, those are grants that come to the county that we've been getting, but then we subcontract with the Indiana Recovery Alliance to operate our syringe services program. And they work closely with our health department in the past. Melanie Bischlag was the one out driving Larry at meeting with people.
Okay, thanks. And actually, the covenant question was going to be my next one. You've already answered it.
Go ahead.
I had a question I wanted to ask. So, does IRA do anything beyond opiates? Like, for instance, would, do that, do anything around meth or any other substance? Or alcohol? I don't know.
Well, you know, I don't know the answer. I will try to get that. I know that right now we're worried about other types of opioids, where there is fentanyl and fentanyl test strips, we're working, worried about the new xylazine drug that's, you know, coming out. We know that there have been deaths up in Indianapolis. We're pretty sure that the xylazine is here. Fortunately, we don't think we've seen any deaths due to that. That's not an opioid, but it still is an illicit drug.
Yeah. One thing that strikes me is when you're talking about access, about people being timid to go get access, do the label, the stigma, et cetera. Sitting here as an alcoholic who has not drank since 2007, anything I'd go to would not have a giant label on it. And I would wonder about anything that might have a label, how that would affect me as a professional, electric official, you name it. So it might be some good food for thought down the road for you and IRA to consider access points for those who do want that, that discretion in that, you know, they're trying to get to recovery treatment, they need that to be vital, but we all know that humans react to, this is difficult for me to admit, right? Or this is difficult for me to be seen, I don't want to risk this, I don't want to risk that. I don't know, just some thoughts, greater minds than me will figure that out, I'm sure.
Any, Counselor Muntzen?
Yes. Commissioner Githens, I've heard questions from various people about to what extent IRA collects data for evidence-based practices to help them with the success of their programs. Do you know anything about this?
I don't believe that they do their own research, but I think that they follow evidence-based practices that they read about. And I know that the folks that are involved with them go to national conferences, they're out, they're doing a lot of different things to try to make a difference here in our own community. But in terms of them doing their own research, they may collect data, but it's not research data the way you and I think about research data.
Okay. So, thank you.
Gordon?
Yes. When, speaking with the health department regarding this grant dollars and how it's worked, she did, she, at the time anyway, maybe it's been worked out, she didn't think the health department would be overseeing this grant. So, if that is the case, who is going to oversee it? Is it going to be somebody in our legal department, or who will be doing that? That's number one. Number two, she said that, that, I didn't write down what she said, I'm going by memory, so I hope I'm not misspeaking. But they are able to track the number of syringes that they order or they receive, whatever, but that, she believes that since they will be separate and apart from the health department, that they could order their syringes separately. Is that as you understand it?
I believe that they can. I don't want to say for sure. Again, I'm going to have to go back to the meeting and take notes on the things that I need to find out about. With the first question, it will be administered through the Commissioners' office, so.
Okay. So, it would seem to me that someone needs to be tracking the numbers and how many they're, you know, sending out, and how many they're picking up, how many is left wandering around the ground someplace for the rest of the pickup. And I think the community wants the answers to that. And so I do have some questions on this as well.
One of the things that does happen with some of the outreach is that needle disposal boxes are also given out, so that we can keep some of the things out of, off the ground and away from things. We have to remember too, that in Indiana, you can still be arrested for possession of a syringe. And so, when people are put in an uncomfortable position, for whatever reason, sometimes they will just drop the syringes rather than be arrested for possession.
Yeah. It's good context to remember. I assume, maybe I shouldn't assume, there are reporting requirements for the grant, so that might be where one would start to determine what reporting and data you might collect on the grant, right?
Basically, if I understand this correctly, if we pay for something, we send in the receipt and we get reimbursed.
I see, so it's, okay.
It's a pretty easy, at least that's my understanding, from the scope of work that we saw.
Wow. All right. Well, I mean, it might be worth thinking about a little bit of evaluation, so that you can, you know, look at outcomes. But I'm going to go with Counselor Crossley and then Counselor Iverson.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Githens, for presenting this. I had a couple of questions. You had mentioned, I guess Counselor Iverson had just said something about one of eight counties, and that you had said some counties are pulling back, and I think I mouthed you on it. Do you happen to know why they pull back?
I don't want to.
Ah, okay. I got it.
I know that Lawrence County had it in place, and then their Commissioners voted not to renew it. That was one of the counties. And I know that in Scott County, there were problems at the county level, and so I believe it's just Austin in Scott County that's now doing their own syringe services program, and they're doing it in conjunction with the Indiana Recovery Alliance.
And then you have mentioned, again, like when we report, the state gives us money for the things that we report on. Can you say how much that is again?
It's up to $576,000. So it's basically a two-to-one match, which is a pretty good deal, especially since this is a good use of money that we can't go out and pave roads with, and we can't go out, you know, and replace light bulbs with. It's directed specifically for this kind of use.
Yeah. And I would just like to say, I think I appreciate this, as we are talking about, you know, the big topic that nobody really wants to say, in terms of what we need to do in terms of building a new facility, this is one of the ways that we, I think, had envisioned on JFAC is trying to think outside the box to reduce recidivism. And so, like, working with groups like the IRA is something that would be extremely helpful, and I think it would be very informative and educational for us to try to, and I know you can't do that, and it would be great to have somebody hear from them. And I've pulled up their website, and I've gone to some of the events that they've had, because we often hear a lot of terminology that is very harmful and of ignorance. And so, I think it would be really helpful for us to really pay attention to this and really focus on, like, what they are doing and how the county could collaborate together. And then I'd also just like to say, in terms of us spending the opioid settlement money, I'm glad we are having this conversation. I think it would be really great for council and Commissioners to work together, because I know that there are departments such as the probation office had mentioned that they too wanted to, had a vision for use of the opioid settlement money to further help them with their particular department and their needs too. So it would be really helpful for us to think about that. And then, I guess, on my wish list, my council wish list, as we talk about buying, you know, a building for IRA, I just think of, you know, other things that we can do in terms of other groups and organizations that have said, hey, we could do X, Y, Z, but we need this. And they obviously are affected by, you know, substance use disorders and things like that. So, I'm really excited to have this conversation, and I look forward for the positive collaboration between both bodies, because one can't do one without the other, and I think this is a great start. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would point out too, that I've invited all you to a meeting next week for the integrated reentry and correctional supports, or IRACs programming. And one of the things that is a key component of that is recovery-oriented communities. And I think that this feeds into some of that recovery-oriented community that we'll need to have in place to put that in. And again, that kind of program is aimed at reducing recidivism and getting people back into the community in a positive way, in some of the same ways that Troy Hafield was talking to you just a little while ago.
Counselor Iverson and then Counselor McKinnon?
Just real quick, wanted to clarify some things. If you're interested in the conversations about abstinence versus harm reduction, SUDAC meets once a month, and we have those types of debates. It's a really interesting time, so if you're interested in those and the way our community's moving forward, please do put the Substance Uses or Advisory Commission on your calendar. And then I did receive a note from one of the members of our health department pointing out there is a difference between the IRA, the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and the SSP. SSP is run out of our health department, IRA is a nonprofit, and that both organizations talk to folks and prefer referrals, provide referrals to other organizations, such as A A N A, et cetera, et cetera. So they're, they're really busy and making sure they're covering the gambit of recovery.
They work very collaboratively.
Yeah, yeah.
Really do. The Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission meets at noon on the third Friday of the month here in the Nat U Hill Room.
Go right ahead.
So, since Counselor Crossley mentioned council wish lists, I, you know, and I've said this before, and I think some others have as well, we are spending a lot of additional money this year on our jail contract, some of which is directly, the jail medical contract, sorry, some of which is directly related to substance use and mitigating substance use. And I would really like us to spend some of this opioid settlement money to help cover the additional costs of the jail contract that are within the guidelines of the program. And I'm not saying that's in place of the IRA grant, because I, it's clear that we can do both.
I think we can too.
But yeah, okay, good. I just want to make sure that we have a path forward, this is money we have already agreed we need to spend, and let's use this.
It doesn't help anyone to leave it just sitting in the bank.
Counselor Muntzen?
So, I just want to follow up. I was going to say the same thing about the jail program needs. But I also had a chance to talk recently with Judge Decoff about the problem-solving court, and I think it'd be very important to invite the Board of Judges to be represented in this discussion about opioid settlement funding, because they have needs that they have identified that relate to this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So one thing I wasn't completely aware of until today was you have already received this grant.
We have.
And already obligated these funds, so.
We would like, because of the timeframe, I couldn't come before you and get this all approved and settle out, especially because it takes a month just to get on your regular agenda sometimes.
It was budget season.
But, but it's, it was too good of an opportunity to pass up, and so if, I don't want to give this money, I don't want to not spend the money from the state. We received some, one of the top awards, especially for a county our size, and I think it's because we're looking at some novel stuff that other people just aren't doing.
And I have seen Ms. Purdy's comments in the chat regarding info that she's shared. That's, that's the information that made me start to realize this was already a happened thing. So, we don't have a request for an appropriation at this time, so.
No, but we'll be coming back to you with that. And I will try to get some of these other things to you all. I'll work with Nick Foyle, who's the executive director of the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and some of the other folks that are involved. But I do also want to acknowledge the work of the folks in the health department. Lori Kelly made her staff available, she attended some of our meetings. Ms. Ford in her office helped me with some of the. Ms. Ford in her office helped me with some of the formatting for things when I ran into trouble. But especially Kathy Hewitt and Melanie Fischlager were critical to getting this work done, and in a very timely, professional manner, so.
So to be clear, you're just telling us you've done this and letting us know that you've done that, and it's not our.
Giving you an update.
Well, at a certain point, the appropriation will come to us. So this is an opportunity for discussion.
Well, that's what I thought, we were doing discussion. But I do recall it being presented at the Commissioners' Meeting, and that's the reason why I called the Health Department. And so I'm trying to figure out where we are.
So they've received it, and it's all done. And it would be very inconvenient for them if we did not appropriate when they came to ask us. Granted, we have been a little busy the past month, and I recognize that we might not have been easy to reach. But I just, I did want, I didn't realize that until their office, Ms. Purdy, sent the information, that it was fully, fully executed and happening.
So I do wanna work with you all, and I think some of these other ideas about working with the health costs within the jail, I think those are completely, completely reasonable. And so, again, I think we should use that money to better conditions for residents of our community.
To that end, and I don't wanna create a cumbersome process, but it might be a good idea if maybe a commissioner and a council person were to hammered out sort of a plan. I mean, this being the foundational thing, and then with the rest of the funds, what are we anticipating spending them on and when? Because we do know we get a tapering off of these funds. Just to kind of make sure that we're all thinking the same thing.
Well, I think too, we have to stop and say, 10 years ago, did we know anything about fentanyl? No. Five years ago, did we know about xylazine? No. We have to also think about what might be coming down the pike. And so I don't think it's reasonable to obligate everything at this moment, knowing that this is like, is it an 18-year payout that we get on this, is that right? We don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, the money, the money is a lot less after the first couple of years. So it's not, you know, it's not huge. However, I think we can safely say that we will need programming money for substance use in, you know, within our jail system. And that, to me, seems like a logical, is everything gonna go to that? I just, I guess, wanted to make sure that we were considering this and not just assuming that it's available for our own ideas on what that means. I wasn't trying to hem us in so much as just remind us to stay on target, yes.
I did wanna point out that probation could require or put in part of the plan of some people who have, you know, come out of the jail to use the Indiana Recovery Alliance. And so therefore, it would actually become an extension of the programs associated with incarceration and, you know, rehabilitation. So I think that, I'm pretty sure that's what's occurring now to some extent. They're working with people who have, you know, been in and out.
It's all part of a bigger system that's working, yes.
Yes, I wanna say it's a component part is basically what I'm trying to say.
I like, I mean, I like the idea of a counselor and Commissioner Givens and Judge Decoffe, for example, sitting down and kind of hammering out some ideas.
I'd like to have Bree from the Auditor's Office with us too, she notes those numbers cold, so.
Counselor Hawke.
Right, I just would caution people to recognize that I do not believe that we can order somebody to go to the separate nonprofit group. You could suggest, or they might say you have to go into training, or you may have to do X, Y, and Z. But to tell them, oh, we picked out this nonprofit, we want you to go to, I think the courts would right away say, no, we can't do that. You know, it's not, it's not like something that's, like even if it's offered in the jail, it's only offered, you cannot force the inmates to go to that. We hope that they will accept that opportunity, but you can't force them to do it. You can say, well, we could let you out earlier if you do X, Y, and Z.
We can't, but.
I can say all I want, nobody listens to me. Other comments or ideas, questions?
It would be great to have folks sitting down and hammering out some of the future of these funds. I, Kate, that's a good idea. I mean, Counselor Wilt, that's a great idea.
Thank you. We'll be in touch then.
Thank you.
Nope, go right ahead.
No, are we still gonna continue talking about opioid?
We have more that we can talk about, yes. And I don't want her to leave, I was just like wrapping up that piece.
I didn't know if you were gonna continue the grilling here. No, I planned on staying, but I thought at this point it was probably Ms. Gregory's turn to take over.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for handling the brutal part, Commissioner. So I, oh. Are you ready for me, is it okay if I jump in, or?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I put together just a summary page about the facts with regard to this opioid settlement and litigation. So there's, I'm not gonna, you know, go through verbatim, but just kind of wanna walk you through some of the information I put together. First, I do wanna know that I would love to be part of a group and assist, if that's a possibility. And I know the Council Attorney just mentioned she was also willing to be part of that and assist with the legal aspects. So I think I already noted that the settlement status is ongoing with some of the settlements still pending. So the estimates are, the funding totals are just estimates at this point. So I do have the, you know, most up-to-date information from the Attorney General's website that I provided in this summary document for you. I provided a link to the, or an email for the Attorney General's attorney handling this case, and also links to funding use information. So the State Board of Accounts did provide guidance that the unrestricted portion may be spent in any manner the county chooses. So that's simple. Now, the restricted abatement portion is controlled by the settlement document. They gave an extensive document with approved uses, which, as long as it's within reason, it sounds like, you know, like anything that's an acceptable use would work as well toward opioid mitigation. But they want you to stick to the core strategies that I noted there. And then they did provide like approved uses for treatment, prevention, and other strategies as well. The Attorney General's website has a ton of good information, so that link is included. And the State Board of Accounts, the SBOA, did state in an email after a lot of back and forth that the code governing this does not assign oversight to any department in the county. So just as normal business, you know, the commissioners approve any contract, the council appropriates, so it's just, you know, normal working relationship between the two bodies. So we do have annual reporting requirements with this as well. So I just have to report on how the money was spent, provide some documentation, which my office will handle. Current balances, and as I noted before, this does not include all of the 2023 funding, but the restricted portion, fund balance is currently $523,074.87. The unrestricted fund balance is $107,207.54. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you need any more detail.
Thank you for pulling that all together for us. It was very, very helpful, especially being able to read through it. Go right ahead.
I also wanna echo that, this three-page brief, three-page brief on page 85 of the packet is really, really helpful. It's very well done, thank you for doing that.
Counselor McKim.
So I, thank you very much, I agree it was very helpful. I have a request, I guess, that's probably jointly for Ms. Gregory and Ms. Turner King. Could we, this is back to the jail contract. Would you be able to kind of, by reading the jail contract and understanding the restrictions, determine how much of that jail contract per year we'd be able to spend? We'd be able to pay out of the abated portion of the settlement funds? I mean, you don't have to have the answer now, I'm just saying, unless you do.
Yeah, we can definitely review in between us, determine what is appropriate and eligible.
And I just got from the, or from Advanced Correctional, a job description for the two new requested positions, so I can look at it with Bree and determine if it falls within the restricted. And I requested some additional information from Advance that they said they could get to me in the next week or so.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Did we ever determine whether or not there was a bidding process for that contract? Okay, sorry about that. One other thing, there is an Auditor's Conference coming up in two weeks, and they are going to present on opioid as well, so.
Okay, great. I mean, we have time, you know, this contract isn't even till next year. But I really think that it would be entirely appropriate for us to pay some out of that.
Counselor Hawke.
It seems to me that we could cover more than one year, since it is a contract. Cause we're gonna need help in trying to get the budget to work for the following year as well. So if, I mean, if that would be possible. And I believe we could cover the whole contract, because so many, so much of that contract is like running people back and forth to the hospital and whatever. So it could be for any number of reasons, it could be medical, or it could be opioid, or whatever. So, I mean, I hope we'll look at that and see if we can't cover just as much as we can, get out of that, and that'll free up that $425,000 that we moved over to help with the salaries, that's my hope.
Of course, there's not enough money there to handle the entire contract, even if it all fit in. Yeah, that was, I mean, that was the purpose of.
You're talking that $425,000, the money in the opioid.
Oh, you're talking about just the portion that we moved, the new portion that we moved over to the correctional.
Right, I'm just saying, the opioid settlement. I'm hoping we'll use it as much as we can for the jail, to free up the money to help everyone.
I would agree with that.
You do agree? Yes. Well, that's one thing I agree on tonight.
Any other comments, Counselor Iverson?
I completely agree that this should all, should be used for the jail and help reduce those costs to the county. I also wanna point out that one of the core strategies is for MAT, Medication-Assisted Treatment Distribution and other opioid-related treatments, and that currently those services are offered outside of the carceral system. So that would be an interesting, that came up a lot during JPEC, just a lot during JPEC, is how do we invest in treatment outside of the jail? And there were no easy answers, that was the meeting that went on for three and a half hours. So I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say that and leave it right there.
Yep, yeah, thanks, that's a good reminder.
Yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Yep, other questions or comments, points of discussion, all right. We are at item 16, and then, then we have the readings of the budget. Do counselors want to take a 10-minute recess? Yes, we are going to take a 10-minute recess, we will be back at 7:46. We are returning now from our recess. And we are at item number 16 on the agenda, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. And this was tabled from our last meeting. We tend to keep this item here in case something comes forward. We don't have to re-advertise, and that's what we're going to do again this evening. So I would like to table this item to the October 24th work session.
Second.
Thank you, any objections, discussions? Okay, all in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are tabled. Okay, now, we will have the first reading of the 2024 budgets for the Monroe Fire Protection District, Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, and Monroe County. There's a lot of reading involved in this portion of the meeting. And I would like to ask some of my colleagues to assist in the reading as we go. The first one up for grabs is the Monroe Fire Protection District budget. Who would like to read that? It's an easy one, it's a short one. I'm gonna pick Counselor Munson. I think you have a copy of it. It should be highlighted in a light green in the top corner. And would you like to?
Here it is, here it is. Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, number 2023-39. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District for the year ending December 31, 2024, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set out of the several funds herein named for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. And then I'm just going to list the fund codes, okay. Fund Code 8603, fund name Special Fire General. Adopted budget $14,995,240. Adopted tax levy $9,013,801. Adopted tax rate 0.2546. Fund Code 8691, Special Cume Fire. Adopted budget $1,178,766. Adopted tax levy $1,215,418. Adopted tax rate 0.333. Totals, adopted budget $16,174,006. Adopted tax levy $10,229,219. Adopted tax rate 0.2879. And I believe that concludes the Fire Protection District.
One down.
Ordinance.
First reading.
Yes, that's the first reading. And are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this budget?
We do not need a second on that, it's just a reading.
It's just a reading, we're just reading. No questions? All right, the next one is the. Thank you for being here. The next one is the Solid Waste Management District budget. Would Counselor Hawke like to read one?
Happy to.
Thank you.
This is ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Lose track. Such sums appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. And the first fund number, fund code is one-two-one-five, the non-reverting capital projects. The adopted budget is zero, the adopted tax levy is zero, and the tax rate is also zero. Uh, the next fund, eight-two-one-oh, Special Solid Waste Management. Three million sixty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy, two million one hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred thirteen dollars for adopted tax rate of point oh-two-six-oh. Next fund is eight-two-eight-three, Solid Waste District Debt Service. Adopted budget three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Adopted tax levy, two hundred ninety-two thousand six, five hundred sixty-five dollars with a tax rate of point oh-oh-three-five. For a total adopted budget of three million three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars. A total adopted tax levy of two million four hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars for adopted tax rate of point oh-two-nine-five.
Thank you. Are there any questions, um, or comments regarding the Solid Waste Management District budget?
And just to, uh, let folks know that Tom McGlasson is, should be available on Zoom if anyone has any questions.
Oh, okay. I don't see any questions. Alright, in that case, we will move on to, uh, the Monroe County twenty-twenty-four budget. And Counselor McKim, would you please start that, um, and read through the, the non-home ruled funds?
Sounds good. Uh, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Uh, these are the, uh, the DLGF-approved funds. Zero-one-zero-one, general, adopted budget forty-eight million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars. Adopted tax levy twenty-two million one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and adopted tax rate zero point two-two-four-four dollars. Uh, one-oh-two, election registration fund, adopted budget one million seven hundred twenty-two dol-, uh, one million seven hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Tax levy, one million four hundred eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero-one-four-three dollars. Fund zero-one-two-four, two thousand fifteen reassessment, adopted budget eight hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, seven hundred seven thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero zero seven-two dollars. Zero-one-eight-two, debt service, adopted budget five million dollars. Adopted tax levy, four million four hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars. Adopted tax rate is zero point zero four-four-nine dollars. Zero-two-five-four, local income tax, adopted budget three million nine hundred thirty thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars. Uh, adopted tax levy, zero dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero dollars. Uh, fund zero-six-one-six, Convention Visitors Bureau, adopted budget two million five hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, zero-seven-zero-two, highway, adopted budget six million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Zero-seven-zero-three, highway special, adopted budget, zero. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, fund zero-seven-zero-six, local road and street, one, uh, adopted budget, one million twenty thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, fund zero-seven-nine-zero, community bridge, uh, adopted budget, two million dol-, two million seventy-five thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, two million one hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Adopted tax rate, uh, zero point zero-two-one-three dollars. Uh, county major bridge, zero-seven-nine-two, uh, sorry, county major bridge, adopted budget, one million eight hundred thousand one dollar. Uh, adopted tax levy, three million three hundred forty-two thousand fifteen dollars and adopted tax rate, zero point zero three-three-three dollars. Uh, health, zero-eight-zero-one, adopted budget, nine hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. One-three-one-zero, park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, sixty thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, two-one-zero-two, aviation airport, uh, adopted budget, one million five hundred three thousand three hundred thirty dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million seventy-five thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero one zero nine dollars. Uh, two-three-nine-one, community capital development, uh, adopted budget, three million seven hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars. Adopted tax levy, three million three hundred forty-two thousand fifteen dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero three-three-three dollars. Uh, funds, uh, two-four-zero-two, economic development, adopted budget, ten million seven hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Uh, adopted tax rate, zero. For a total of adopted budget, ninety-one million six hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars. Adopted tax levy, thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and adopted tax rate, zero point three-eight-nine-six dollars. Oh, sorry, for adopt, total adopted tax levy, thirty-eight million five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars.
I didn't listen to that one.
The debt service fund number is zero-one-eight-zero.
There we go. Thank you. I'm gonna continue with the Monroe County budget with the home ruled funds. Those are the funds not reviewed by DLGF. So for fund code nine-five-zero-zero, extradition and sheriff's assistance, uh, adopted budget of five hundred thirty-eight dollars. Fund code nine-five-zero-one, surveyor's corner perpetuation, adopted budget, two thousand, ugh, two hundred one thousand eight hundred seven dollars. Fund code nine-five-zero-two, local public health services, one-one-six-one, with one million five hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Nine-five-zero-three, Monroe County nine-one-one fund, adopted budget, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand. Fund code nine-five-zero-four, Monroe County Convention Center debt, six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Nine-five-zero-five, auditors and eligible deductions, three hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. Fund nine-five-zero-eight, user fee, jury pay, thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Fund nine-five-zero-nine, user fees, juvenile probation, eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. Fund nine-five-one-zero, user fees, adult probation, two hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Nine-five-one-one, user fees, project income, job, six hundred forty-nine thousand fifty-three dollars. Fund nine-five-one-two, supplemental PD services, one million two hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars. Nine-five-one-four, user fees, oops, skipped one. Nine-five-one-three, clerk's record perpetuation, one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. Fund nine-five-one-four, user fees, diversion prosecutor, prosecution? Okay, one hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. Fund nine-five-one-five, user fees, court alcohol and drug, two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred ten dollars. Fund nine-five-one-six, local health maintenance, thirty-two thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. Fund nine-five-one-seven, emergency planning, right-to-know, sixteen thousand fifty dollars. Fund nine-five-one-nine, misdemeanor, uh, county corrections, community corrections, uh, one hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars. Fund nine-five-two-one, alternative dispute resolution, fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Fund nine-five-two-two, sales disclosure, county share, ninety-five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. Nine-five-two-three, convention center capital improvement and maintenance, one hundred thousand dollars. Fund nine-five-two-four, county offender transportation, three thousand dollars. Fund nine-five-two-five, local health department trust account, seventy-six thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars. Fund nine-five-two-six, user fees, problem-solving courts, fifty-three thousand seven dollars. Fund nine-five-two-seven, Westside Economic Development, Richland Township TIF, two million two hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars. Fund nine-five-two-eight, Forty-Six Corridor Economic Development, Bloomington Township TIF, two hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars. Fund nine-five-two-nine, Fullerton Pike Economic Development, TIF, one hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred one dollars. Fund nine-five-three-zero, plat book, forty-three thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars. Nine-five-three-one, convention center operating, five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Nine-five-three-two, user fees, cable franchise, five hundred thirteen nine hundred thirty dollars. Fund nine-five-three-five, PSAP, inter-local, two million five hundred eighty-five thousand. Nine-five-four-three, public health emergency fund, twenty thousand dollars. Nine-five-four-four, identification, security protection, eighteen thousand dollars. Nine-five-four-eight, park non-reverting operating, two hundred forty-three, six hundred thirty-five dollars. Two hundred forty-three thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. Fund nine-five-five-one, recorders, records perpetuation, three hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Fund nine-five-five-two, stormwater management, two million four hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars. Nine-five-five-nine, county elected officials training, twenty thousand dollars. Nine-five-seven-one, pub-, public safety, local income tax, three million nine hundred sixty-two thousand twenty-four dollars. Nine-five-eight-eight, federal award title four D, five, fifty-seven thousand eighty-six dollars. Nine-five-eight-nine, curry profile TIF, two hundred four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. For a total of twenty million six hundred six thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. That concludes the Monroe County twenty-twenty-four reading. Are there any questions or comments on that budget? Yes?
So, so first of all, on the debt service, five million dollars, is that, are we simply advertising high because that wasn't the, the, the bond we just passed?
Yeah, it's outside the levy and it just doesn't, they'll adjust once we close and they have the information. So I just didn't, um, change that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that everybody, and particularly the public, is clear that we just approved a three-point-one-million-dollar bond, not a five-million-dollar bond.
And Counselor Hawk, did you have, oh.
Right. I believe these are the numbers that were entered into Gateway and we've made, uh, several changes since that. Or are these, are these some brand-new numbers? I think the same.
I apologize. I was going to, um, clarify that, um, I went over all the, um, the, uh, 4Bs and then the, um, ordinance today with the auditor and we adjusted some operating balances. See, we'll see some fluctuation there.
So the adopted budget for general, we believe it's going to be forty-eight, seven, 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 two, two, three? I mean, I hadn't heard the total because so many changes have been made and so I wasn't real sure. You know, as I said earlier today, I don't know where we are on the numbers. This is.
This is correct. Um, the, the only thing that isn't up to date, and I think this is what Ms. Kim is putting her hand up about, um, that I just remembered, is, um, the clerk's office has not updated their numbers for the comment adjustment.
And the, and the elected's.
And the elected's salary. So those, those things are not included in here and she will have to come back for an approp-, an extra appropriation.
Or transfer out of vacancies.
Or that, yes. But everybody else got theirs in?
Right, what, what about the additionals for the, uh, the number of hours for attorneys?
That was included. That's all been updated. Uh, uh, all the other departments got their information updated and even including the comments. The clerk's office was not, did not get that information updated, so it is not included.
Yeah, there have been, um, a lot of adjustments recently, I guess, um, which is where you're seeing, um, the, uh, budget differences. It's just happened so quickly, it kind of slipped my mind.
Right, uh, we, we also know that we have other numbers coming in. We still don't have the numbers from the assessor's office. Uh, I would sure hope that would have already been in by now.
Are, are, what are you talking about?
We haven't approved the, any of that though, right?
Yeah, we haven't seen anything on that, have we, other than?
Yeah, the assessor's office is still in process in terms of, I know she wanted to have her positions reviewed by WIS.
And Kim and I spoke with WIS today and got an update and, um, WIS is going to provide a memo to PAC regarding the assessor's request and their concerns.
Okay.
So, so I guess it's, you know, we, we did receive a, um, a, a report from FSG that was requested.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if this, is this the appropriate time to kind of discuss that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that would be, that was a surprise.
It was a pleasant surprise.
But he, they didn't have all the information. We need to make sure that we understand the verbiage that they sent.
Yes.
Not just the numbers.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cause that's where the proof is in that pudding.
And they were not, um, informed about our, uh, corrections tax.
Right.
So that's not in there either. But they, they were very responsive to Bree's request in providing up-to-the-minute information at very last, last-minute request, so, um, I, I, Bree had said, um, that she let them know too, that we plan to, um, have a closer relationship in the future.
Good. Right.
So I had, well, so I, I, if this is the right time, I mean.
Right, be sure and talk about that interest income because he didn't adjust that correctly.
I, I don't know correctly, but, um, you know, the biggest, the biggest, I guess, my, my observations on this, just, you know, so everybody knows. First of all, big picture, it looks like we're fine unless and until the full annexation hits from the city, so.
Yeah.
Now, he's, uh, they, they've clearly, uh, estimated the annexation impact at, at pretty much the,
Yeah.
the maximum that it could be if the city ru-, runs the table on everything. But what that does show is that things start to look really bad in twenty-twenty-six. You know, there's a little bit of a, of an effect in twenty-twenty-five, but when, when it hits the lit in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven, that's when, that's when things really plummet. So, you know, that's really the, I, I, I would say that's obviously the, the biggest concern. Other than that, we really, uh, you know, things look pretty level for the most part. One, one thing I'm not quite sure why they do it this way. Um, one, one thing I'm not quite sure why they do it this way is that if you look, they, they have what they refer to as an assumed spend down level, which is basically the amount of reversion. It's the percentage of the, um, or it's the inverse of the amount of reversions. It's the percentage of the budget that they're assuming that, uh, that we would spend down. And, you know, for the general fund, for example, uh, they provide an estimate for ni- at ninety-six percent. But if you actually look at the starting and ending balances, they don't use that assumed spend down in their calculation. Instead, they just, they assume we spend it all, uh, even though they have that calculation. If you loo- if you look at the ending balance, uh, uh, for each year, it's the, it's the fully expended budget, uh, ending balance that gets carried forward to the next year. So, you know, once again, uh, we found in the past that, you know, probably that ninety-six percent, ninety-five percent is probably fairly accurate and that still leaves several million dollars in reversions. Now, of course, that, that's, it's up to us as to whether or not we allow, you know, how many additional appropriations we're going to allow. Are we going to allow additional positions to be created in the middle of the year like we did this year? Um, you know, this, this maybe, we may have to be, uh, a lot tougher on department heads that want additional positions, uh, even ones that we like, I mean, even positions that we'd like to see.
We like them all. We like them all equally.
Everybody you like gets a raise.
Yeah, right.
I like you, Jim.
Right. The, the other thing that's a little bit, I, I guess I don't like about the way that, um, that FSG does the analysis is that each of the levy funds are really treated independently, rather than as part of a frozen levy where we can kind of m- move the levy in between funds, uh, depending on, on what's needed. So, you know, I kind of like the format we've used in the past where we sum up all, all the funds in the frozen levy and work from there. But that's, you know, this, this is what they're working with. Then the other question is, uh, as Counselor Hawk brought up, the, the interest on investments income. If you look at their assumptions there, they're assuming, uh, I, they clearly don't have all the interest that we put in for twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four uh, in their miscellaneous revenue estimates. Uh, and then only, uh, and then, uh, estimate a five percent increase in twenty twenty-five. And then they have N A in twenty twenty-six, I don't know what they mean by that. But it's, you know, i- i- in reality, for twenty twenty-four, we've got a, a pretty big increase and will probably stay relatively stable in the, in twenty twenty-five and then we're going to see something go down quite a bit.
I was actually confused by that as well because when I, um, spoke with FSG, um, they were comfortable with the interest revenue that they had seen, um, from us through, well, until twenty twenty-six. So, yeah, I think, uh, maybe that was just an oversight.
Okay. That might be something that they can address in the next, in the next version, take a, a deeper dive into the, into the interest rates.
But, are you through? Because I'm going to ask you a question.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, in their verbiage that they sent, they did discuss, um, the interest rate, but they didn't include the fact that a lot of this interest is coming in because we're setting on a lot of cash with the ARPA money and so we know, I mean, we just figured even if it is a sixteen percent of the four million, it was like, uh, when we figure six hundred and forty thousand. So that seems to me we'd have to adjust that then for that following year or whatever year that ARPA money is going to be gone. That, you know, that needs to be looked at. And also the fact that we borrowed money, so to speak, we took it from some of the other funds in the frozen levy and moved it over into, into a pot of money that we thought we could use for the, um, salary increases. And in their, uh, language, they said, yes, we would have to return part of that money to, I believe they did mention the health fund. Now, we had a discussion about that the other day, Counsel, Ms. Kim, and was it, um, I guess if their miscellaneous revenue would remain as it is now and we took a million too, but they've got the same miscellaneous revenue, you'd have to figure out how much you really had to return at the following year.
I mean, it looked to me like if they spend the entire appropriation, then we're going to wind up with a four hundred thousand dollar or so deficit. And the cash balance at the end of twenty twenty-four could still sustain that for another two years without.
Okay, you, you're sure, okay.
Well, I mean, if you look, just, yeah, go back to our, our four Bs and look at, uh, how much of a shortfall that, or how, how much their budget is minus their miscellaneous revenues. I mean, that's the shortfall, right? If we're not, we're not putting any levy in there, then.
Then you're going to take that out. And also, uh, they were speaking of spending down and not, not having as high a levy for the election fund. So does that mean we're no longer going to do what we had agreed to do a few years ago? I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but what we agreed to do a few years ago was to make sure we put in like one-fourth of what we thought needed to be there for the presidential election. Because if we don't budget for it and save for it there in some fashion, we'll have to come up with it because we have to cover the elections. And now, and generally you can't, um, move from one fund to the other fund during the year, but with the exception of the election fund, because since we have to cover that, we would have to cover it. We'd take it first from the election fund and then we would take it from county general or Rainy Day or wherever we can get it. So, um, you know, I like, I like what we had done, what you had done, Counsel Member McKim, in looking at the four Bs so that you could see, okay, this is what it is this year, this is where we move the money. Now here's what it's going to look like the following year and the following year, so we know when. It's just something we understand better. Because when I looked at what FSG sent and I'm just like, okay, they're talking about concrete and whatever or whatever. It, it just didn't, I studied it and I thought, no, I, I'm not going to spend any more time on this.
Well, I, you know, so I, I essentially did that. I took our four B format and essentially kind of played it forward for, uh, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six as well. I, after we got the FSG report, I, I sort of wanted to cross check some of my assumptions with, with theirs and I'm just not to the point where I really wanted to, uh, to share this yet. But I was essentially doing kind of essentially what Counselor Hawk was, uh, was suggesting. But I, like I said, I did kind of want to make sure that they're, um, you know, that at least the assumptions that they make, that I could at least figure out if I'm making the same assumptions.
Do we have, the other question is, we should have known by now, an update on the local income tax? That, that was supposed to come from the state budget agency over to DLGF on the second. And I keep looking for it. Um, and also the supplemental, have we heard anything about the supplemental? Because that could be a lot of extra cash.
But that's already in our, uh, our current four B, isn't it? Your estimate of the supplemental?
The supplemental, what? You, you counted the supplemental in the miscellaneous that we don't know what it is yet?
The auditor provided an estimation, which is, I'm sure will be beneath the supplemental.
I was just making that assumption because the number was higher than the, the certified distribution.
Are there any other questions or comments? Did, do you need to say one more?
Um, just regarding the election fund budget, we chose, uh, the auditor chose a twenty percent operating balance. So we're really close to, um, where you wanted to be with that anyhow. So twenty percent of the twenty twenty-four budget, which is the election year.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Iverson?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. You know, even for the most astute of minds, this is a very confusing conversation. Um, and I was wondering, uh, has the council made, uh, it, uh, in the past made this analysis, uh, by FSG available to the public in any way? The multi-year projections?
It's, I don't think we've like put it out there on a website or anything. It's a, it's a document that the public can access if they request it, um.
It would be, it would take an extraordinarily large amount of explanation to make it in the slightest way useful and not misinterpreted, but.
It's pretty.
Uh, I, I, I understand, I understand, uh.
Would you like to put it in, on our website, is that what you're asking?
No, no, I think, I think that probably Counsel Member McKim is correct that it would provide, it would, it would need a lot of explanation. But I also think that this useful conversation that we're having here is fairly hard to follow without that document. So it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two where the public watching this does not have the benefit of seeing the multi-year projections or the list of assumptions that were encapsulated in an email. You know, it, it's, it, I think it's, it'd be hard for those that are interested in following it.
Ms. Shell and I had, um, requested, we didn't anticipate, um, FSG would be able to provide the full report. So, um, I, with your permission, we might suggest in the future, just kind of a, a really simple summary page of their, of their findings, which would be, um, a little bit easier to understand in the future.
And, and for the public to have an on-ramp into these conversations where they don't spend twice a month en- engaged in all this, yeah, I, I think that'd be really helpful. And they've also heard, um, this council talk about the benefit of having multi-year projections into the future to better guide us. And I think that would be helpful to, to show that we are doing just that.
Um, our conversation that we had with FSG, I did tell them that we were looking into annually having, um, a projection report prior to our, uh, budget sessions in September. And he said as long as he can get the June thirtieth numbers and, uh, the other reports, he can get us that information. So we look, we will be working with them so that we can get that to you guys timely, so.
Nice.
Good.
And, and does the, does the contract allow us to actually have Mr. Garitas here to have? I mean, because we found that to be helpful in the past to have a, a work session discussion. So along with the report, the ability to have some kind of ask about?
Um, Mr. Cockrell is currently working on the contract, so I think that could be added if it's not there.
Okay, because he's definitely done it before and it's been very useful.
Yeah, it was.
I, I agree.
It was great.
Yeah. I would certainly like to suggest if we do that, that that's just what we do for that work session. Because the last time he was here, he sat there and I'm sure we were paying him by the hour and he sat there and sat there. Remember, Counsel Member Iverson, when you looked at me and said, why are we having him sit there?
We did have that conversation, yes.
So, uh, it, and then by the time he did speak, we were, you know, in the mode to go home. It was like, it had, it was like at the end of.
To let the record show that Counselor Hawk is suggesting we meet weekly. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Sorry.
I would wish you if I did give C.
I know, I know. Um, no, that's duly noted. I'm sure that that was an oversight on my part, um, if we made him wait that long. Any other comments on the twenty twenty-four? Let's keep moving, yeah, we've got more to read.
I'll be quick. I was just going to say I appreciate the report for the following information, uh, the effects of annexation that it contemplates.
Yeah.
Um, and I also want to say that for, uh, come January first, it is a new city administration and a new council, uh, that comes in, some returners. And I would encourage them to think long and hard as they make recommendations to the county about all manner of things, including what justice looks like. Um, also what implications the city policy has upon our ability to fund things. Because that, you cannot have one without the other. Uh, we're operating in a system here that is exceedingly dependent on each other. And attention to that detail in all manner of things, uh, is going to help us as we move forward for what I hope to be a much better era.
Well said, yes.
Yep. You're here. Since the commissioners did put in place, uh, what they needed to so that we could move forward with the community corrections budget and that's not in here, of course, it's too late to advertise it as part of this advertisement, but, um, had we not better be considering what we're going to move? Is any part of that sitting there in that general fund that we plan to pull out and put in this? Or did we just not budget four hundred and some thousand dollars that we have to? See, I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not following what we're doing with that four hundred twenty-five thousand.
We moved it, we moved it from, um, the special purpose lit to the corrections. So it's not really in play in the general.
We only did ha- that, the first half, we removed it, but we still have to add it once we're ready to do a budget for, but clearly we're going to have to do that as an additional appropriation.
Yeah, but we can't do that till we have everything in line. So, I'm sorry.
But is there something setting in the general fund budget that we're going to take out?
I don't think so.
We're.
We took it out of special purpose.
Man, I don't, I forget what we were going to move over there. I thought we were going to move part of that contract over, but if we move the contract over to ARPA.
We have already taken four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars out of the contract or fro- for the contract, not, not special purpose. That was that, it was either general or PS, but I honestly don't remember which one we did, but where, which fund that, uh, that line is in. But we have already taken that four hundred twenty-five thousand out. We're not going to get any more gain on that unless we're able to then also remove some more and fund it with the opioids. So we might get another two hundred, you know, depending on what.
But we haven't actually budgeted anything yet out of that, uh, community corrections.
Correct.
Correct.
So I'm just saying we have to remember to do that.
Yes.
Yes. We definitely do. And hopefully we have opioid fund as well.
Right, every bit.
All right. If we have no more of the, of commenting on that budget, we have some more reading to do. We are now going to do, uh, the first reading for the Monroe County twenty twenty-four salary ordinance for elected officials.
All right, ordinance adopting Monroe County Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for county elected officials. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two A. Whereas the Indiana legislature adopted the Indiana code thirty-six dash two dash three, uh, in other parts, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas IC thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, number one, fix the number of officers, deputies and other employees. Two, describe and classify positions and services. Three, adopt schedules of compensation. And four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensation. Whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish compensation schedules and pay policies. Now being ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the number of and compensation for elected officials of the county from the period of January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whose salaries comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by IC thirty-six dash two dash five are hereby solidly fixed and the following maximum level of salary is shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. For elected officials, time worked on or after January first, twenty twenty-four and prior to midnight of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this salary ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook, regardless of when the payment is issued. Elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the elected official salary compensation grid. County auditors shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts listed are in an annual. The compensation amounts listed are an annual appropriation amount. Calcula, calculation of the bi-weekly rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end. Elected official base rate schedule. In order to establish a more equitable system in setting compensation for Monroe County officials not set by the state, the County Council will be setting a base rate for elected officials with a schedule of amounts to be applied. The base rate schedule is outlined in Section 1 of the elected official salary compensation grid. The chief public defender is excluded as the salary and compensation is the same as the salary and compensation of the elected prosecutor. The sheriff is excluded from the base rate schedule as his/her salaries paid pursuant to IC thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point five or IC thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point eight. Additional information regarding payment and certification, supplementals and/or per diems are outlined in Section 2 of the elected official salary compensation grid. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. The annual salaries for the Monroe County Sheriff is tied or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1st. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the County Council which are tied or related to the Monroe County Sheriff is mandated by the state of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January 1st. This is presented to the County Council of Monroe County, Indiana by induction in full for the first time this 10th day of October, 2023.
Thank you. That was lovely.
Are there any questions or comments on the elected officials' salary ordinance? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to the next reading, which is the 2023 Salary Ordinance for Monroe County Employees, which Councilor Iverson and Councilor Crossley will be reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance adopting Monroe County Indiana Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies for County Employees. Ordinance 2023 dash forty-two B, whereas the Indiana legislature adopted Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash two dash three of such sequential, which established the Monroe County Councils, the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, number one, fix the number of officers, deputies and other employees; number two, describe and classify positions and services; and number three, adopt schedules of compensation; and number four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensations. Being ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana that this ordinance affixes the number and compensation of employees of the county from the period of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, including all officers, deputies, assistants and other employees whose salaries comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash two dash five sequential. And this compensation is limited by the following lines and maximum levels of salary shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are conditioned upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation, fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Council. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook is the intent of the County Council. This language will encourage, will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. Any Monroe County employee, including those employees under contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed order, rule, guideline or mandate, shall not receive compensation above the salary grid outlined within this ordinance. The county auditors shall not issue pay warrants for any pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amounts and the calculation of the bi-weekly hourly compensation rates may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end compensation paid on or after January 1st, 2024 and prior to midnight, December 31st, 2024, shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the salary ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook regardless of when the work is performed. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Any item not covered in the salary ordinance shall be governed by the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Job description, classification definitions. Beginning calendar year 2022, Council approved using the updated classifications and levels from Monroe County Government job descriptions. Compensation levels have been updated using alphanumeric letters A through E. The listing of all classifications outlined in Section A of the ordinance notes. Full-time date compensation step increase schedule. Employees will attain a new compensation step increase level on the first day of the pay period, which includes the anniversary of their most recent full-time hire date. The compensation step increase schedule is outlined in Section B of the ordinance notes. Knowledge, Skills and Abilities, KSA compensation procedures. Employees who have gone through the review process are approved to receive a Knowledge, Skills and Abilities KSA status. May receive compensation either one, three or eight-year level based on the compensation grid applicable to the assigned job description, classification and level. An approved KSA status will remain with the original requesting department for the determined period of time. Departments that request an employee's KSA status to be transferred when the applicable position becomes vacant within a department and employee's KSA status does not automatically transfer with the employee and subject to review. An employee's approved KSA status only adjusts the compensation base rate for that employee and employee's approved KSA status is not included in the years of service pertaining longevity and on vacation calculations. A listing of approved KSA hires with term dates is outlined in Section D of the ordinance notes.
We'll not be reading that fast.
A longevity scale. Employees employed within Monroe County Government prior to November 1st, 2023 shall receive a longevity payment for continual and uninterrupted service. These payments will continue until either there is a break in the employee's service or the employees in, or the employee in deployment with the county. Any employee hired after November 1st, 2023 is ineligible to receive longevity payments. To determine longevity, the effective date for longevity is the employee's most recent full-time hire of the employment with the county. All records must be verified by the Employee Services Department that involves any type of uninterrupted service. Longevity pay for eligible employees is based on a schedule outlined in Section D of the ordinance notes of complete and uninterrupted years of service. A break in service will result, will result in the loss, excuse me, loss of longevity pay if the rehire date is after November 1st, 2023. To be eligible for longevity payout, an employee must still be employed on the day after his/her anniversary date. Elected officials do not receive county longevity pay. Employees whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guidelines or mandate do not receive, do not receive county longevity pay. Probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive longevity. Prior years of service credit. Begin in January 1st, 2017, County Council approved allowing complete years only of prior years of service for each term of full-time Monroe County Government employment be applied when calculating the rehire of an employee's compensation step increase level. Months of service which are less than one full year shall not be counted nor combined in order to achieve a complete year of service. For example, an employee who worked for one year and three months shall be credited with one year of service. The council administrator and/or personal administrator must verify all prior Monroe County Government service with employee personnel records and/or with a perf report before being applied to returning employee salary. The council administrator and/or personal administrator will notify the department head if the prior service credit total has been verified and granted. The council administrator will maintain a spreadsheet of employees with confirmed prior service credit for future use. Any additional information and/or explanation of the Monroe County Government's salary schedule and compensation policies is included in the salary ordinance for the purpose of clarification and transparency. See Section Ordinance Notes. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender, Chief Public, Chief Deputy Public Defender and Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied and/or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe County Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1st. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by Monroe County Council which are tied and/or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the state of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January 1st. Additional detailed defensive, defense service standards, standard G, Supreme Court compensation information, Indiana Code Section thirty-three dash thirty-nine dash six dash five and Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash two dash three dash seventeen are incorporated by reference.
Thank you. We did it. Are there any questions or comments on the salary ordinance? All right, if there are no further questions, oh, yes, what?
I want to share my screen with regards to what was just read.
Okay.
We put this together after you guys had made a decision regarding longevity.
Yes.
So after looking at it and that kind of thing, our legal counsel decided we needed to clarify some more language with regards to that, so. And the clarifying language is just me trying to think through every possible scenario that we're gonna get, which like, oh, I offered the job, you know, on October 23rd, but they couldn't start until November 1st and so.
Yes, indeed. So you were offering an edit to what was just read?
Correct.
Yes, got it. So the edits are in blue?
Yes, the edits that she has added are in blue and it just helps clarify. And it also, is this the section here that also mimics the language in this first paragraph that's in our personnel? In that first paragraph, she, Molly edited it so that it mimics the exact language that's in our Personnel Policy Handbook.
So the complete and uninterrupted years of service, that's why I add it, complete there, because to mimic the language.
Trying to get it so you guys can see it. Another section that we added is with regards to the correctional center employees. So I'll let you go ahead and explain that one.
So I went through and looked at the collective bargaining agreements and Highway gets longevity payments as if any other county employee. So there's going to be a section added in their contract or collective bargaining agreement that says their longevity will be paid out in accordance with the salary ordinance, so not after November 1st. And the deputies are the same way. The jail's longevity payments are included on their hourly rate, so they get forty-eight cents for the first twenty years of service. So we just added a statement to the longevity payment that correctional centers or correctional center employees are covered by their collective bargaining agreement and not by this salary ordinance.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
So two things. Should we not in the section on? Could you go up to the longevity section at the beginning? Yeah. Should we not say an employee has an official hire date and has begun work on or after November 1st, 2023? Because there's sort of, we, we refer to prior to November 1st and then after November 1st.
What happens if?
Yeah, we actually have a little gap on November 1st. And I think the intention was to be on or after.
Okay. Yeah, I can change it. Just tell me.
In the, at the end of that paragraph is where you would change the wording. Yeah.
Official hire date and has begun work on or after.
Here, okay.
And then the other thing was in the section that you added on the corrections officer. Can you scroll down so we can see? Do we want to, do we want to add something to that sentence that just says something like because longevity is already included in their rate? I mean, I, I don't want to make it sound like we're just trying to screw the corrections officers. It's that it's already included in their hourly rate. I mean. It's just explanation. It's just. Well, Highway, no, just the opposite. Highway does and Mayor deputies do because it's not included in their hourly rates and. Contract. I mean, maybe it's good enough. I don't know. I just didn't want to make it sound like, you know, we're negatively singling them out.
I think what we could do is after, at the very end, after collective bargaining agreement, the last sentence, add longevity for correctional center employees is provided for by the collective bargaining agreement.
If we're in the editing mode. Oh, wait. Will not be given to the.
I almost think that that, because that is a, yeah, every time they do an agreement, everything is back up to jump ball on whatever it is. I'm not saying anything. I almost say, think there you say, covered by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Or as longevity is provided for by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Since that is all negotiable, not saying anything there, but. Because this almost mandates.
Considered by the collective bargaining agreement.
Because this kind of mandates.
Provided for by.
County Council automatically says this each time. It's always gonna be there.
So the sentence right before that blue sentence, where it says probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive longevity. I think it's fine now that I say it out loud. I was gonna say that this rule wasn't specific enough and, but I think and would receive it makes it just great. So will we read this part again next time with the changes or how do you want to address that?
You're not on. Correct.
Nobody will.
Nobody.
Correct. Yes, yes, correct. I thought, I thought it was a little unclear. Could you scroll back up or down, I guess it is? Yeah. No, yeah.
I, I think we probably should reread it next time just because we're gonna put the updated version in.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion? Should I say? Council, I move, we amend the draft 2024 salary ordinance to include the text that's been provided to us by the council office that's on our screen right now.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We will move forward with that. Any other discussion on the salary ordinance? Everything okay?
We also, legal counsel would also recommend that this longevity information also be put into the 2023 salary ordinance be, just because we will still be hiring people.
Just for clarity.
And just for clarity, so that when somebody, if somebody does get hired, they'll go, it wasn't in there. So we also would like to put that in the 2023.
Counsel, I move, we amend the 2023 salary ordinance to add the updated longevity text.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Note that it was, it was unanimous.
Unanimous.
And we want to show you. Uh, do you want to start with just aviation and I'll?
I will start wherever you will tell me to.
What are we doing?
What, what item is this?
Hang on.
I, I think this is looking at the. I, I think this is looking at the salary ordinance grids.
Ye- yes, this is the detailed information that we put in.
That we're trying to avoid.
Yes, that we put into the salary ordinance.
Oh, so we've highlighted things that might change just for your reference. So right now there is, the aviation department gets.
Hang on, I'm just gonna hide this, sorry. So it's, there we go.
Right now, the aviation department gets a supplemental paid out for ARF certification and EMR certification. And Jeff Cockrell mentioned to me that he's been working with Carlos as I think the fire district might be taking some of the ARF responsibilities over. And so that might change, and we're looking into whether that has to go to an hourly rate as did the supplemental pay for the correctional officers and the, and the road deputies. So that's just may change.
May change. Okay. We are still looking at getting some clarification with regards to the clerk.
I'm working on the election worker pay. It, it came up at the election board meeting and we started looking at it. The inspector, the judges, the sheriff, the clerks, all are receive a per diem, but that per diem's set by the commissioners. And there's actually a county code that provides a range, and then within that range, the election board's supposed to pick. So I think that might change just to say paid in accordance with Monroe County Code, whatever chapter it is, which is slipping my mind. And then we have to figure out what to do with the absentee boards, and so we're just working on that issue.
We can't see, I can't see the bottom half of whatever you share because of the, yes, so, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But basically, you're just telling us you're still working on it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in here that we're still working on. For the deputy corners, we're, there's conversation going on whether they should be contract employees or part-time employees. So once we figure that out, that could change in the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
And then everything else that are possibly going to change is related to the sheriff deputy and the correctional officers collective bargaining agreement. So previously, the shift pay, the EMT pay, the training officer, the cert, and the investigators was all along some, it's going to that hourly rate. We're still talking about the education incentive and the training bonuses within the contracts. And they're adding a new specialty of a hearing officer. And then the numbers for each of those teams have changed.
Is that all of our changes? I think so.
What's a hearing officer?
And then it's the kind of the same thing for the merit deputies, that those specialty pays are going to an hourly rate. And I just finished today a fiscal impact, an estimated fiscal impact based on my very limited mathematical abilities to send to you guys in regards to at least the merit deputy contract.
Good times. What's a hell, a hearing officer?
The hearing officer in the jail contract. So there is, what they're doing is they're forming a team of officers who handle internal write-ups for inmates. And how, what consequences or disciplinary actions are taken for those inmates? So there are some things that are in jail policy that do not constitute a crime, such as like if you were caught tattooing or something, so those hearing officers deal with the internal policy issues.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Deckard?
I, I was just gonna quickly say you'd mentioned your work with the election board, and I want to thank you, Ms. Turner King, for working with the election board in that very difficult process. And I want to encourage all of us from council office, commissioner's office, clerk's office, election board, and legal to continue to work in that effort. Gosh knows, right, election law in Indiana is about as clear as mud on a day where you dropped your glasses. And we want to be right by that, because if we're not right by that, someone will say we're operating outside of Title III, and that's got some felony consequences. And in a recount or a contest, that becomes an issue. So nobody's trying to do anything but get this right. Let's continue in that effort, and I, I appreciate that, we just gotta keep moving forward.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for sharing that, I didn't realize you were going to, and I'm glad you did.
Well, these are just things that after we had submitted, you know, into the packet, it was like, you know, we probably should like update this, and that way you kind of have an idea of what we're still working on, so. We'll, I'm almost positive, like we always do, we'll have amendments to the ordinance. So we try to get it, you know, as current as possible, but you know, we're always making amendments, but at least, you know, for the adoption, we'll be pretty close.
Great. If there are no further questions, we will move to item nineteen from the council office. And this is our second look at the two thousand and twenty-four council meeting schedule. And some adjustments have been made based on feedback we gave last time, including the meetings have been moved to five PM instead of five thirty. The September work session from twenty-fourth to the seventeenth. And some dates held for a potential sixth budget session. Could you remind me, Ms. Shaw, why the September work session was moved from the twenty-fourth to the seventeenth?
Auditor Smith suggested that we move the work session to the seventeenth in order for the council to be able to attend the AIC conference, which is always held the last week of September. So I did this adjustment based on that recommendation. And also this year, we moved into having six days for budget sessions. And so if you want to have a tenant, you know, go ahead and schedule a date, and if we use it, that's fine. And if we don't, we can cancel that budget session. But I thought if you wanted to go ahead and choose one, either the eighteenth or the nineteenth, then we could go ahead and have that on there, and then if we don't need it, we can just cancel it, so. But my, I would like to be able to get this, not finalize tonight, but your recommendations tonight, so that we can finalize it at the work session, just so we can get it out to the departments and they can start planning their meetings for two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Does anybody mind if we just say nineteenth is a placeholder for a sixth possible budget session if we needed it?
Great.
All right. All in favor of just choosing the nineteenth, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Everybody said aye. All right, there we go. You have your eighteenth for September free, use that time wisely. Mr. Iverson?
I, the PAC schedule on this calendar looks fantastic. I am very doubtful that we're gonna get away with having any month without having a PAC meeting. So I, I like that you indicated that in May, there won't be a PAC due to the election, and we can pick an alternate date if we need to. But I, I think this year has shown that we need a PAC meeting every single month.
Yes, and I, I think when we get to that, whoever the PAC committee is, we can make that determination, because we will also have November as well.
Agreed.
And so we can decide then.
Yep, yep.
So that's why I kind of left him open.
The only other thing that I would throw out there for consideration, and it does not impact days and times, so this is good to go. But I would like us to consider whether or not we would want to just have council meetings and not differentiate specifically between regular and work sessions. Have perhaps within the agenda an agreement that will take care of what has been considered regular session business for the first half, short recess, work session. It seems to me that that would help with the workflow and be more reflective frankly of how I've been doing it, because we've had so many times where regular session business just can't wait a whole month. So that's what I would just propose for consideration.
And I would add, when we do put off regular session for that month, that next meeting is so jam-packed that it's, it's a slog to get through because there's so much business.
I do want to say that when, in the month of September, I purposely did not schedule budget sessions on the tenth or the seventeenth.
No, that's a good idea.
That way we will avoid that over, you know, trying to do a budget session as well as regular business, so.
The dreaded September backup.
Correct.
So if we don't distinguish between regular and work sessions, are we always going to be meeting from up here at the dais, or are we?
We're gonna send a circle on the floor.
I've drawn, I've drawn a circle.
So what if you met like this, but we pulled a table up?
Yeah.
For the department.
Thinking about, so it wasn't like, we didn't have.
Kind of like budget session setup.
Did more budget session-y, so at least we're all sitting.
Okay.
It was a compromise. And then I've heard that there might be new furniture in here at some point, and we'd have to reconsider regardless.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And I know I had another question, but I can't remember what it was. It's late, I'm hungry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is late.
A lot of good work got done at this regular.
Well, there's time, there's still time to talk, so. Move forward with it as it is. I don't even know if they're in the meeting anymore, so. We'll, we'll finalize it another time.
Okay, so do you want me to prepare it as just meeting, meetings?
Yeah, go for that and see if they notice.
Okay.
Getting really cheeky, sorry.
I mean.
Threw it right up.
Okay.
It seems, it seems to be like, taking advantage with actually happening, though, like that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It sounds like a consensus.
Yeah.
You can't see a difference between the two.
Right.
Right.
All right.
And are there any council comments?
Just one very, very one. Just, and, and councillor, President Wiltz already knows this, and the council office does, but and I know this is absolutely the worst thing for a county councillor, but I am not going to be able to make the final vote on the budget next week. I have a work trip that I absolutely cannot get out of. And so I won't be there, and I apologize.
You will be missed.
You've put in plenty of work on this budget.
I hope you said everything you wanted to say tonight, Dick.
If not, I'll, I'm sure councillor Hawk, I will have a few more words over the, the analysis.
Can, can you zoom in?
He can zoom in and do a discussion, but he can't vote.
Or he, or.
I will do my best, my schedule is not my own when I'm on these work trips, but.
Yeah. Freaky.
Go, go for it, you know?
Any other council comment?
I'm having my shots tomorrow, too.
Okay, then we will, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.